Committing meeting. Oh. Hold on. Thanks, Ryan. Well, we reopened the Falmouth Public School Committee meeting. We were just in executive session. As you can see, we're back at high school after being at the admin building on election day. But we're back at high school library today, all in person. We'll start our meeting with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If there's anyone who's making an audio or video recording of today's meeting, can you please notify me as chair so I can notify the public as is required by the open meeting law? And you can do so by raising your hand. Thank you, Mackenzie Ryan from the Falmouth Enterprises reporting. And Terry Althunder is also reporting. Anyone else making a recording today? Okay, great, thank you. And you can lower your hands. Thanks so much. And we'll start off with our mission and vision. Okay. So Falmouth Public Schools' mission, the Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Our mission, Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them. Thank you so much. And I just want to say a warm welcome to our new addition, Bill Dorfner, who was elected for his first term last May 18th, the day of our last meeting. So welcome, Bill. Thanks for.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And we'll begin with public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on our agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, the committee could not take action on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. And I neglected to mention that our meeting is being recorded and televised on channel 14 and is also available on our YouTube channel following the meeting. And that also can be watched on Facebook. And I see we already have a couple of hands up for public comment. We'll start with Heather Jeffney. Can we promote Heather so she can? Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, guys. Awesome, thank you. So my name is Heather Jeffney and I'm a kindergarten teacher at East Falmouth Elementary School. Speaking up like this is not easy for me, but I feel very compelled to speak up for my students. I thought I'd share some of my thoughts to help the school committee understand why Falmouth educators are feeling the need to speak up, all in efforts to work together in good faith for our students. At least, we have had insults. Had a injury this year with Lori Andrade, our AP and SEBA being taken away from us. Morale morale is at an all-time low and we are struggling to give our students what they need. Lori Andrade has gone above and beyond, not only for her students in this district, but for hundreds of families.
Heather. Heather, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Many of us have helped during Christmas time gathering donations.
Heather, can you maybe shut? I don't know if you have your video on or anything. If you can close anything in the background or move closer to your Wi-Fi because we're having trouble hearing you.
And I paused for time.
Hello? Okay, we lost Heather. We will come back to her if she can log back in and we'll try it again. We just paused your time, so you don't you don't lose anything. Don't worry. Um, Kim. Marisha?
Marissa.
Marissa?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thanks, go ahead.
My name is Marisha Messer and I am a 24-year veteran of the Falmouth Public School system. Two years ago, we as a staff were trained in ALICE, the Active Shooter Protocols. During that training, we were instructed about the need to get the most students to safety, even if it meant leaving for dead, gravely wounded students so that we could save others. We are entrusted and expected to make literal life or death decisions about your children. I have heard members of this committee say how much we teachers are appreciated, respected, needed. But do you really remember who we are? We are the school adjustment counselor riding in an ambulance with a hurt child, the third-grade teacher choreographing a class team dance, the remote teacher organizing a remote science fair project. We are the librarian turning kids on to library, the kindergarten teacher shopping out Target to make engaging PlayStations, and the physics teacher creating a bed of nails on which he lay to teach a physics concept. However, when we cry foul, when we stand as one body asking for the most basic of employee rights, confidentiality, responsiveness, competence, somehow now we've gone too far and the battle lines are drawn. No wonder morale is at an all-time low. No wonder people are fearful for their jobs and too terrified to speak to what they know is right. No wonder there are more grievances this year than in previous years combined. Prove to us that you believe the words you say and that you know who we are. If we're respected, listen to us. If we're appreciated, stand with us. If we're needed, help us.
Thank you, Ms. Messer. Uh, can we? We get back Heather? Can we try Heather again? I see she's back in and maybe she can pick up where she left.
Can you hear me?
Um, a little bit? Let's give it a try and see what happens.
Hello?
Oh, Heather, I'm so sorry. We just can't hear you at all. Everything is completely garbled. I'm so sorry.
I don't I don't understand what's happening. I'm so sorry. But I'll try and finish if that's okay.
Yeah, now we can hear you. Great, go ahead. If you would like to, if you have your thoughts.
Do we hear them now?
Yes, we heard that.
Oh, okay. All right, let me go back to my thing then. Geez, sorry. I'm on my phone, so.
Yeah, please.
No, I have them. I have I I have them right here. I just had to pull them back up. Yeah, at least we've had insults. Morale, we are struggling to give our students what they need. Lori Andrade has gone above and beyond, not only for her students in this district, but for hundreds of families in this town. Many of us have helped her during Christmas time gathering donations for local families. She is a role model in our profession. She knows her stuff and clearly acts in the best of in the best interest of our students and teachers. I also want to say that the very necessary and important measures taken in order to protect our community during the pandemic are having huge impacts on our students' learning and social emotional development. I am hoping to see an effort to listen and collaborate more with teachers and families so we can help address these impacts. I believe it is imperative that the school district maintains lower class sizes and access to specials, along with utilizing emergency funds that are available in in order to help all students and families in our community. These things and more will help teachers help every single one of our students to reach their full potential. Thank you for listening and providing time for public comment. And I'm sorry that my Wi-Fi messed everything up.
Oh, thank you for persevering so we can hear you. How much?
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Hi. Can we promote Ms. Oliver?
Hi, um, hello.
Hi, we can hear you. Go ahead.
My name's Todd Oliver. I'm a 1988 graduate of Falmouth High School. I've been employed with Falmouth Public Schools since 1993. Um, I have always been proud to be from Falmouth because Falmouth has always been about people and it's always been about people first. But recently, I am not proud to be from Falmouth. I think the environment that I currently work in is one of fear. People are afraid to speak up. People are afraid to speak their mind in fear of retribution from administration. Um, I love my job in the classroom. I love teaching kids, but every day to go to school is extremely difficult for me, knowing the situation I am walking into. I implore you as a school committee to get a different narrative. You have heard one narrative for a year. You've heard the side of one side. You have not heard the narrative from everyone. I have been employed with Falmouth Public Schools for 28 years. I have never been involved with our union. I have never been involved until recently. That's how strongly I feel about how we are being treated as educators. I feel that you aren't hearing the whole story, that that you need to reach out to us, that you need to hear what we have to say. Because the picture you are being painted by administration is not the picture that is happening inside Falmouth Public Schools. I welcome any of you to email me. I welcome any of you to contact me and I would love to have a conversation with any of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Can we promote Ms. Harrington?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks for this. So I have witnessed several demonstrations in town by school teachers. As a community member, I would like to know how much money the district is spending on unnecessary internal investigations and litigating contract violations. It's concerning. Reportedly, the school committee is under investigation for numerous unfair labor practices. Where is the transparency? Why is the school committee violating union contracts but extending the superintendents during a pandemic? When will the school committee hold itself and the superintendent accountable for such egregious behavior? I'm looking forward to your answers. Thank you.
And as we mentioned at the start, we don't respond to public comment. So we have no response to those questions, but we're gonna go ahead and promote Ms. McCarthy.
Hello, my name is Jennifer McCarthy. I'm a mom of three students in T-Ticket Elementary School, two in first grade and one in preschool. It has been brought to my attention that T-Ticket and East Falmouth will be splitting a music teacher and an art teacher. I have concerns about the quality of music and art the the students at T-Ticket will receive. For example, how will band run in chorus in the art show at the end of the year? We will, we will be affected with only one teacher in two schools. Sorry, sorry, my daughter just came in.
No worries.
Okay. Also, I heard that a third-grade teacher and a kindergarten teacher will be leaving T-Ticket, so we will only have two third-grade and two kindergarten classes instead of three. How will this look for the children coming off a pandemic? Having large classrooms, having large classrooms makes it impossible to give individualized support to the children. I think our children need more support now than ever before. As a parent, I want our teachers and our students to feel supported. I'm not sure how those proposed changes will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing your thoughts. Can we promote Ms. Althunder?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay, first, I'd like to start off with everyone in this position on the administration. I understand that your position is very difficult. You have a lot of things to juggle and get things done. And it's a balancing act. But I want to respond with that, that everyone that took these positions knew what that would entail when they took it. So as a parent of a child in the Falmouth Public Schools and as someone who has graduated from Falmouth Public Schools, I'm very dismayed at the lack of actions, transparency, and information provided to the community. There's a lack of trust from not all, but most of the community. These lacks of actions are creating a bigger divide of parents, where we have some that are shaking their pom-poms for the administration and we have those parents who are marching with signs. I have seen statements signed by the town, the school, and the police department regarding the issue of systematic racism and the changes that would be made. Words cannot make change, only actions can. I have requested information from this district that's over 90 days old and had to go directly to DESI to get it and to write you to send me the information. That is something that should not happen. Transparency with the community. This town lists important history dates, yet did not acknowledge the Tulsa massacre, 100th day of this horrific tragedy in our history, nor acknowledged the Aisin community and the violence taken against them. An independent body was hired to investigate a teacher educator in our schools. Yet, when black children are suspended at a rate that wreaks a discrimination, an independent body was not hired to investigate. Where is your due diligence in protecting children of color? The manner in which this district has handled the situation with a teacher in East Falmouth, and I'm not saying who's right, wrong, or indifferent, but the way that it has come out was done in such a way to intimidate other educators from speaking up, and we have gone from hashtag I can't breathe to hashtag I can't teach. To that end, I have filed a complaint with the OCR.
Ms. Carrington, so you know your time is up. If you could please finish.
Excuse me?
Your time is up. It's been two minutes, but so if you can just please finish up your thought.
Okay. It has been documented and passed to an investigator for your willful disregard for the children of color and your lack of reducing steps to stop the bleeding. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, can we promote? Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We can. Great, thanks. Go ahead.
Yes, hi, how's it going? My name is Trevor Cunningham and I'm a Falmouth High School graduate and my wife is a teacher at a phys ed teacher at Falmouth High School. It has come to my attention that Falmouth plans to open a virtual school. I'm hoping the school committee will address the following before final decision is made about opening a virtual school. When will the district present data justifying this move? What financial and personal personnel impact will this have on our schools? And most importantly, why isn't the district throwing every possible resource into our children? They need more human connection, not screen time, larger classes, and fewer in-person resources. Thank you for your time.
Uh, Mr. Cunningham, it's actually on our agenda to talk about the virtual school tonight. So if you'd like to stick around, you can hear our conversation about it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, can we promote Ms. Shra?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Um, current school administration will never regain any trust or respect in this town if the dismissal of a 28-year veteran educator is followed through with. Teachers in Falmouth are upset and experiencing feelings of mistrust that is leading to a hostile working environment and extremely low morale. Falmouth is a family community with dedicated educators that not only support each other, support children and their families, but are also proud citizens of this town. We cannot allow a wonderful community member who has fought for teachers, supported our children, and has dedicated her life to this community to be dismissed for thing for standing up for our community beliefs. I thank you for your time.
Uh, can you come back? Let's round Ms. Prudie.
Hi, my name is Lynette Prudies-Catch. I've been employed with the Falmouth Public School system since 1988. I have known FBA president Lori Andrade for over 29 years. She first came to the Falmouth Public Schools to North Falmouth as a student teacher while I was a second-grade teacher there. Lori worked hard and showed great insight and promise as an educator. She was later hired by retired principal George Spivey at the East Falmouth School, where she has worked until being placed on paid administrative leave since April 16, 2021. Throughout Lori's career, she has modeled exemplary character, teaching, care, and concern for her students, their families, and colleagues, and strong leadership. Lori has always gone the extra mile to help others. Lori speaks up only after she has thoroughly researched any given topic or situation. The actions taken by Lori Andrade are all within her legal rights as a union president under mass general law. This is why she and the FBA have the full backing of MTA. We strongly believe that FPS administrators have violated labor laws by harassing and attempting to intimidate Lori Andrade for over a year, trying to weaken the FBA. They have not honored multiple assignment letters signed by Lori Andrade and Superintendent Dur filed harassment charges against Lori, put her on administrative leave, and have now threatened to fire her from her job as an educator. However, there are no labor law police to arrest anyone. FBA has to proceed thoroughly frustrating low-established channels in order to fight the repeated retaliation. Right is right, wrong is wrong, and trying to get rid of Lori Andrade is wrong. I am also a parent who has raised five kids that have gone through the Falmouth School system. I am appalled by the behavior. We have now put Falmouth on the map and we say that we are a place for no hate, while I am appalled to say that I am part of this team that is promoting the dismissal of a treasured employee. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll just keep moving down the list. Ms. Shra?
Hi, I am a. My name is Hollis Stewart. Can you hear me all right?
We can. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I am a parent. I've had one, my older son, go through the school, Falmouth Schools already. And then I have two younger kids that are going through the schools. All three have gone through East Falmouth Elementary School. Um, I was also a graduate from Falmouth High School. I graduated in 2004.
Oh, I think we might.
Teacher nonetheless. Uh, in another neighboring town. I am on here and I don't generally speak at these things. But I'm sorry, that's my son. I'm concerned that the movement of music and arts to be split between two elementary schools. We have longstanding, it stood up for arts in our Falmouth Schools. I have been a huge proponent my entire life for how wonderful our Falmouth Schools are in these ways. I've stood up time and time again in multiple towns proudly talking about Falmouth education. I am incredibly concerned about what's happening with the union. We are only as strong as our teachers. If our teachers are not behind what's going on in our schools and in our towns, then our schools are failing. And I think that it is incredibly important that these things are brought to your attention and they're heavily thought about because without the teachers, without the parents, without a strong united front, our education system will fail our children. And we will not have children in this town anymore because people will move them out. So that is my my piece. I wanted to make sure that my voice was added and I think it's really important that it's considered.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Can we promote Ms. Kodes?
Hi, I'm an East Falmouth resident and also a graduate of Falmouth High School. And honestly, I come to this as a concerned parent of two children that attend East Falmouth School. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, just making sure. I'm sorry. Um, so I have, you know, I know that I voiced my my feelings and discoveries on Facebook publicly because I wanted to know what other parents felt, knew, and understood about the situation that is facing Lori Andrade because that is what sparked my interest in what is going on within our schools. And I started to uncover things like part-time teachers from our PTO notes for music and art. And I understand that this has been done in the past because enrollment has dropped. But I implore you to consider that maybe our enrollment has also been affected by the district lines that have never been changed since, from what I understand, the early 90s. I also am concerned about the relationship of the administration with the teachers, our educators who have gracefully carried our children through this COVID crisis and do their best by them. To read in my my school's PTO notes that teachers are afraid to advocate for themselves and their students is abhorrent. I just don't under, I just want to know what will be take, what steps will be taken to rectify the relationship with our teachers before it boils down to our students more than it has already. Um, I also don't under, I also want to know if there is anyone at the public, Falmouth Public Schools that is financially profiting off of modern teacher, a program that I did not even realize, a platform that our students utilize. The key to successful government is transparency. And there's no transparency here with with what's going on within our schools and especially the situation that has also taken place with our teachers. And the dismissal of Lori Andrade unfortunately has created a serious problem at East Falmouth Elementary as she was our special needs advocate and liaison for kids with IEPs. Now, I'll be honest and full disclosure, my children do not have IEPs. But when I put this on Facebook, my inbox was flooded.
And just so you know, your time is up. So if you could finish, finish your thought.
Okay, so my thoughts are this, that basically I know of five children that are already going to be pulled from our schools next year and I'm concerned that there is going to be more and that this is really, it needs to be fixed and it needs to be fixed fast. And I just want to know what steps are going to be taken. Thank you.
Uh, can we promote Ms. Wilcox?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, beautiful.
Okay, thank you. That's my family. Hello, my name is Lisa Wilcox. I am a proud Falmouth Clipper, class of 88 with Todd Olivera. Woo, go Clippers! I am a 23-year veteran of Falmouth Public Schools. I've been working as a speech-language pathologist for all of those years. I've worked at the high school, the junior high school, and I've spent my last 18 years at East Falmouth Elementary. I am a proud member of our Falmouth Educators Association and I support the return of Lori Andrade to her position as assistant principal slash SEBA of our building. What I'm, but what I wanted to talk about tonight in my my public comment is about my concern about the lack of transparency of employment and hiring practices at Falmouth Public Schools. The messaging that we receive from central administration is that no educators are losing their positions. However, when we hear this, there are often positions that are being lost by teachers retiring or by teachers moving on to other jobs outside of the district or even within the district. But there are positions that remain unfilled and that is not being, I don't believe, properly indicated to the school community as well as the larger Falmouth community. Um, our speech-language pathology group here at East Falmouth, not at East Falmouth School, excuse me, at Falmouth Public Schools has lost two and a half positions in the past decade, maybe a little less. I'd have to look into the data, I apologize. From retirements or resignations, and those positions have never been filled. So nobody was fired or terminated or lost a job, but our speech therapy group has lost positions to to service students in Falmouth who have special education needs.
And Ms. Wilcox, your time, your two-minute time is up. So if you could just finish your thought.
I I apologize. Thank you. So this puts a lot of extra stress on our speech department. And if you drive by the school parking lots late at night, it will often be the speech therapist's car still in the parking lot because we have heavy workloads and so much paperwork to accomplish that we can't get done during the school day. So in closing, I'm asking for more transparency and accuracy in the amount of employees gained and lost in each school building and in central office each year. And I'm asking for the school committee and for Falmouth Public Schools to resume announcing moves. For instance, Jill Meserve, who used to work at East Falmouth, became a vice principal over the summer at Mullen Hall. And I didn't find out until well into the school year that she had been promoted to that position. So in the in the past, all people were notified of these kinds of.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
We're fair to everyone.
I understand. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Can we promote Ms. Freeman, please?
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Freeman, I'm a grade-three teacher. Hold on one second.
Oh, yeah, we can hear your feedback. If you can just turn the sound off on the other.
Can you hear me better now?
Perfect. Thank you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you now. That's much better. Thank you.
All right, okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Nicole Freeman. I'm a grade-three teacher at T-Ticket Elementary and I'm a longstanding Falmouth Public School employee. and I'm a longstanding Falmouth Public School employee. And as a longstanding public, Falmouth Public School employee, I have seen many changes and many ups and downs in our district. We are in the business of kids, and for the most part, I'm proud of what we do for our students and their families. In my 20-plus years, I've always felt a strong collaboration, mutual support, sorry, and professionalism shared between the school committee members, administration, and FBA members. This year presented us with unprecedented challenges. We needed to reimagine teaching and learning in so many ways, and because we're in the business of kids, we all tried to do what we thought was best. Somewhere, somehow, the collaboration, mutual support, and professionalism got lost along the way. It saddened me to watch tearful colleagues express their feelings during a school committee meeting only to be dismissed and cut off. The FBA, however, listened and tried to do what a union does, advocate for its members and its students. A teachers' union unique to other types of unions is different because its members deeply care about their students, and we often put the needs of our students above our own needs. As we reflect on the needs of our students following this unprecedented pandemic, it is imperative that we think about students as students and not just simply numbers. At T-Ticket School, the administration is cutting a third-grade classroom and putting children who we already know are struggling learners into two classrooms. We know these students, and not one educator who works with this group of students or who has worked with this group of students for years would recommend putting these students into two classrooms because it's not just about the numbers. It's about those students we teach. We are in the business of kids. And I too have known Lori Andrade actually since high school. We earned our master's degree together, and we volunteered together for many school events, and she is an articulate person who is not afraid to ask the tough questions and get things done for what students need, and she serves our students and our families well in this district and has done so for many years. She doesn't look at kids just as a number, and to lose Lori would be a detriment to the students and the families we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Can we promote Mr. Charles, please? Oh, that was weird. Everybody's moving all over.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Corey Charles, I'm a music teacher at East Falmouth School. I've been in Falmouth teaching for nine years. Falmouth Public Schools has a saying that relationships matter. There have been people who've brought up the fact that there'll be less music time at each school. Yes, it's true that kids will still get music, but relationships will suffer. They will not be the same when you have one person in a building for two days out of five. They will not get to know all the students, they will not get to know the staff members. I've been there, I spent my first four years teaching in two buildings, and it is not the same. Also, as an FBA member, I think it's important that people know that we, as an FBA, stand behind our leaders because they stand behind our teachers, but above all things, we all are here for our students, and that's what we're in the job for, that's why we teach. And right now, the morale in our school, my morale, my nights, my days, everything, it's so low, and it's so difficult to go to school and to give our best to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Can we promote Officer Drew?
Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Sorry, Mark Mancini, I don't know about the name, but I'm a product of Falmouth Public Schools, don't have any kids in the system, but I've been following what's been going on, and, I mean, the whole thing seems pretty obvious, it was a back-and-forth between administrator and Ms. Andrade, who I don't know, never met her, and I will say one thing about her, everyone who has spoken to me about her has only sung high praise about her. However, being in a union almost my whole life, I know how unions operate, and she used her position to retaliate against someone who made an unfounded claim against her, which was found to be unfounded by independent investigation that this administration pushed forward. And to retaliate, it, it just goes against everything that the, the no-guff spirit of the Falmouth Public Schools system just permeates, and it, it's just sad to see, and, you know, now with her, her position of power, she's using the union to further try and intimidate this committee, this administration, and it's, it's sad to see, and it doesn't belong in our school system, and I just, you know, I, I think it's pretty obvious what's happening, and I don't think it's right. I think that she didn't do anything wrong in the first place, but she made a mistake when she retaliated because of her position of power, and it's scary to see. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Mancini. Can we promote, promote Ms. Larson, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, we can hear you, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lauren Larson, and I've been a sixth-grade teacher at Morris Pond for 34 years. I've given my heart and soul to this community, and I'm also retiring in nine days. You might say, why speak? You're leaving. I speak because I care. What is happening now is not okay. We are better. Falmouth is better. I love my school, I love this town, but more importantly, I love my FBA. So please, find your love too. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Larson, and congratulations on your retirement. Can we promote? Thank you. Oh, what happened? She's on mute. Oh, I'm sorry, you're on mute, can you unmute yourself so we can hear you? Does she know my phone? Kate, can you hear us?
Sorry, I can hear you now.
Oh, there we go, okay, great, go ahead.
So, I've heard, so I'm Kate Scahill, I work at East Falmouth Elementary as a third-grade teacher. And the last year's been tough for everyone, but especially when it comes to our relationships. I've heard our superintendent speak of relationships and how they matter, how staff are valued, transparency, but that's not my reality. What I see is broken relationships and secrecy. And not only at East Falmouth was our special education coordinator in our vice principal just taken away, but it was never addressed. No one, no one said anything to the staff, she was just gone. Not replaced. And the support given to our school and our staff just evaporated, you know? My go-to person for restorative justice for my class, the person I called on Milwaukee every time, was just gone, and there was no one to replace her. So my students suffered over that loss, and I didn't know how to explain it to them. No one through this whole situation has asked to hear the teacher's side of the story. No one's come to us to say, hey, I know this is hard right now, losing our, our vice principal. And, and I just wonder why? Why? Why hasn't anybody asked us? You know? We care a lot.
Ms. Scahill, that's your two-minute warning, so if you can just finish it, or two-minute time limit, so if you could just finish your thought?
Yeah, I'm done, I just, I just want everybody to work to restore this relationship in, in bring Lori back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last comment is going to be from Ms. Fontaine, can we promote her, please? And I think you're still on mute, oh, there we go, great. Can you hear us? We can't hear you. I'm sorry, Ms. Fontaine, we can't hear you at all.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
There we go, there we go, go ahead.
Sorry, having techno, knowledge issues here. So my name is Christine Fontaine, and I'm a special education teacher at East Falmouth. I just want you to know that the students and the staff are suffering because East Falmouth has lost one of our biggest advocates for special education students, staff, and their services. Staff are afraid to speak out because they are afraid of retribution. People are nervous to say anything because they don't want to lose their jobs. And if Falmouth Public Schools can move to dismiss a longtime respected veteran educator like Lori with deep ties to the students and the families of Falmouth, it's difficult for any of us to feel safe. East Falmouth students are suffering because there is no additional administrative support on a daily basis there for our kids. Many of these students have close relationships with Lori that they are now missing, and they're suffering daily because of that. Lori goes above and beyond to make sure that the staff and students at East Falmouth feel heard, respected, and appreciated. We have lost a crucial asset to our team, and the morale in our school is at an all-time low. This situation has been devastating and frustrating, to say the least, and the special education team, along with other members of the school community at East Falmouth and across the district, feel that it's important for the town of Falmouth to know what has been done to one of our elementary schools and the schools across the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us for public comment tonight. I heard a number of comments about transparency, and I, I just want to make sure that, that the public who's with us tonight understands that the school committee doesn't make personnel decisions except for the hiring and supervision of the superintendent, but we do have policies around privacy for, for personnel matters, and the conversations and the comments about Ms. Andrade being placed on administrative leave is a personnel matter. And so I hope that that explains a little bit why the information wasn't more broadly broadcast and explained, because it's, it's a confidential matter. And I know that probably isn't satisfying enough, but I just wanted to at least make mention of it. We will move on, and you are all welcome to stay with us if you would like. We're going to start off the rest of the meeting with our introduction of our school resource, our new school resource officer, Officer Brandt. Are you with us, Officer Brandt? And Ryan, if you could also promote Chief Dunn? Oh, great, thank you.
Officer Hurd.
Thank you. There they are. Hello, gentlemen, thanks for joining us.
Good evening.
So we're excited and thrilled to have Officer Brandt join us in the Falmouth Public Schools. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Dunn and Officer, or sorry, Sergeant Hurd, to introduce our new SRO, our school resource officer, Officer Brandt.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, School Committee, for giving us this opportunity to introduce the new school's resource officer. Just to have an idea, when Ryan was your previous school resource officer and being promoted to the rank of sergeant, he can no longer do that job, and we were fortunate in the Police Department to have three fine officers apply for the job, and after intense interviews and, and all that, Officer Brandt came out on top, and I'm really pleased, I think, you know, he's going to follow in the steps, he's got big shoes to fill following Ryan, but I'm confident he will do a great job for you. And I'll let Tim tell you a little bit about himself.
That'd be great, thank you.
Nice to meet you guys, I'm Tim Brandt, I've been with the Police Department for six years, and ever since that posting came out, I was excited to apply, I like working with kids, going back to college, we worked with the Boys and Girls Club of Holyoke, really just being mentors for them, and I'm looking forward to just being a mentor in the school to all the children, being someone they can come to, being approachable, not judging any of them, really helping them through their problems, and getting them services if they need any to be successful in, in every aspect in school.
Great, thank you. Anybody have anything they want to mention or ask? Andrew?
I was hoping that somebody else would go first and maybe throw a little bit of a softball to you first, but I, I do feel like I need to ask, and I'm assuming that you're aware of what is considered the school-to-prison pipeline, its impacts on students of color, and the relationship with implicit bias, and it's something that is a concern to the community, especially when we're grappling with data that is reflecting disproportionate discipline rates for our, these same students. So I guess I wanted to know, what are your thoughts on how you use your position as SRO in a manner that will not contribute to the school-to-prison pipeline, and what do you plan to do to mitigate implicit, implicit bias in your dealing with our students?
I believe in diversion programs and keeping this out of the court system as much as possible, and really finding out why and what's causing the issue, and trying to fix the root of the problem to keep them out of the, the court system.
Yeah, are you good?
I guess maybe just the, is there any type of training on implicit bias or anything like that? Because I know that it can, we can go in with great intentions, but this is something that we, you know, happens through our, just, you know, being members of our society.
Right, yeah, I'm currently going through the School Resource Officer programs, that's helping a lot. We do receive the training for implicit bias, so I'm sure I can pick some stuff up and bring it into the school with me, so.
Andrew?
I'd like to follow on.
I'm sure, go ahead, Chief.
If I could follow up on that one? Yeah, just follow up on that, all the offices in the Falmouth Police Department, we have to do yearly in-service, and in-service the last couple of years particularly, there have been many, many, much training on, you know, de-escalation, implicit bias, and in programs like that, and, and those are continuing, and we're moving forward, even more training as, as the year moves on.
And I appreciate the question because, you know, we've talked at great length about discipline disparity in our schools, we're working all, we've been working all year and previous years to address systematic racism in schools and in our society and being active participants in anti-racism, and so we, we can't just assume that just because we're thinking about it, everybody else is thinking about it too, so thank you for bringing that up. Any other, oh, I saw you on the screen before, I saw you in real life, go ahead, Bill.
Officer Brandt, first of all, welcome. The, the training that you said you'll be going through, is that the basic SRO class through NASRO? That's correct. Okay. As a, as a retired police officer and former SRO myself, I appreciate you applying for and stepping into this position, and I, I know that a lot of people assume that when there's a police officer in the school, that they're there to arrest kids, and I know that that's something that is kind of hard to overcome, and what a lot of people don't understand is that you're actually there to build relationships between the kids and the police department and the community. So I, I appreciate what you're doing, I appreciate the, the uphill battle you have sometimes to kind of help people get over that fear of the police and, and understand that you're there as a resource to them, that it's actually in your title, and if there's anything, you know, we can do or I can do, please let me know. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much, oh, sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Just a quick comment, as an ex-principal, the school resource officer was probably the most critical person in the building. The relationship that person developed with students throughout the entire building, throughout the total economic structure was, was great to watch and see. Yes, there is authority that has to be instilled with police officers, but there's also that mechanism that they bring that relationship to kids and support kids, and I think that's fantastic. I can't wait for you to start working with kids at Falmouth, and I think you'll do a great job, and welcome aboard, and I will appreciate your service very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any last question? Oh, sorry, I almost missed you.
Hi there, Officer Brandt, I just wanted to say welcome, and I'm really excited to get to know you and what you can offer as a resource for our students. to know you and what you can offer as a resource for our students and staff. I think this is a critical time right now and I think you definitely have your plate full, but I think that you're going to be great and I wish you, not that you need luck, I think you're going to be great, you know, as is, but welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any last questions? Great, well, thank you all for joining us tonight. We appreciate you spending the time to introduce yourselves to us and I'm welcome.
Nice meeting you all as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the time.
And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent for our update.
All right, thank you. So, I have on my update tonight about the art and music positions, it's my first item. So, and I'll just add this for those that are concerned, there have been no final decisions yet. Each spring, we look at, as there are retirements and resignations, we look at the enrollment in the schools. And there happened to be a retirement and resignation in the art and music area and we were looking at equity across our schools. And just so you know, there were concerns that there that there's far fewer sections in the East Falmouth and T-Ticket Schools of students than in the other schools, which doesn't provide that equity among students or staff. But there is more to be considered than just that and those are the things that we're being, that's being considered now. We, you know, very much support the arts in our schools. I think the most important thing that I think everyone needs to know is that no student is receiving any less instruction than any other student in the district. So, the instructional piece, which is extremely important, is absolutely going to be the same. But since then, we have worked out, I know there's a concern about an art teacher having to do art shows in two different schools and that would not be the case. It'd still be one art teacher with an art show in each. And then, just recently, concerns of the course and band, which is understandable, making sure that we have. And with the addition, the hiring of additional support, that's also going to make sure, we would never not want to have course or band in our elementary schools as well. So, and then I guess band is, we often have to contract with people to do band, so it's not necessarily the people. So, that's been a traditional practice in our district and so we are looking into that as well. But I will say that we, there, again, there's not been a decision to be made and it's likely that our art and music teacher, we will have an art and music teacher in each one of those buildings. So, enrollment is going down. I believe in a different presentation in a little bit, we're going to hear from our Finance Director, Patrick Murphy, about the enrollment. And so, enrollment has, there's been a steady decline in Falmouth over many years and across the Cape as well. And as enrollment goes down, then, you know, you have less sections of students. In the, since I'm on that topic and it did come up, I will just say that at the kindergarten level, it is down across the district. We are going to have, right now, numbers of either 15 or 16 and 13. So, between 13 and 16 tops for the kindergarten. That's where the kindergarten numbers, even in decreasing some of the kindergarten sections.
We do have the number of sections or the size of the class?
The size of the classes.
Okay.
Which is actually lower in many cases than we've had in years, even if we end up reducing numbers. We hope that students are coming back and we hope that, you know, parents just haven't registered yet and over the next month or so, we're going to have more students, which means we would bring more kindergarten teachers in. That happens every year. It's been every year since I've been here and, you know, my understanding, it's just a, it's been an ongoing practice that happens in the spring. We have to give teachers notice by May 15th by agreement. If we don't have the numbers, we can't keep the teachers on the rolls, but we certainly hope that we can bring teachers back. And so, the, there's, there's decisions made about every section, so whether it's kindergarten or third grade or, you know, the specialist, we have to look at the number of students that we have and then, you know, just making sure that we still have a low class size, but we're, you know, also addressing all the needs of our students. So, this is a process that we've been going through, we're still going through. And again, I'm just going to say, you know, that's very fluid and changes ongoing. There was a, my next update was about a PE teacher. During this COVID year, there were, there was a need for one less PE teacher when the schedule was being built at one of the schools. And so, for the COVID year, I, one year only, had asked if the teacher, if there were a teacher and it became a volunteer position, if they would build health units at the elementary level, because it's one of the things I believe in health at all grade levels, you know, especially beginning at the elementary level too. So, that was a one-year position that we created. The health units were developed, our PE teachers will be delivering those health units moving forward. So, there was, we just have an additional PE teacher in our district that actually does not have any sections to teach, and so we did go down a PE teacher. I don't know, my next topic's kind of shift, so I don't know if there's any questions or anything about.
Let's do, that was a lot of staffing updates, so let's get questions on that before changing subjects. Melissa.
So, I just, I want to speak to a couple of things. The music and arts program, I think, is paramount in the elementary school, the elementary level, and then, of course, moving up through. I myself, as everyone knows, was an FHS graduate, K-12, proud band kid, and I wouldn't have got there if I didn't have consistent musical instruction. So, I hear, I hear what we're saying that, you know, the numbers are down and they've been going down. I'm hopeful that there are parents that just haven't registered their students yet for kindergarten and I know that time and life gets away with you and, you know, before you know it, it's late August and, oh my gosh, my child is going to kindergarten, I totally appreciate that. But I also think that we're not going to get perhaps more families if we're not offering a full complement. And I also appreciate that we still have to keep the lights on. I'm not naive to that as well. Falmouth has been proud for, you know, I heard a lot of comments this evening that we are Falmouth proud and we are a community and we are, you know, a family community and I, I think that that speaks to having a full complement of the special teachers and I'm sure that there are certain teachers that don't prefer that we don't say music and arts are specials because they are mainstream and they are equally as important. So, again, I just feel like if the numbers are going down and we're looking for school choice and we can't offer a full, you know, teacher at each school, that sort of would give me pause if I were new to the area or looking to come here. I think that there's something to be said for knowing that Ms. Hart, my English, my music teacher, is always going to be in that music room even if there isn't a class. And I know that, again, we have to keep the lights on, but there's something really important about the students having consistency because maybe there's a student who finds comfort in Mrs. Hart and knows that she's in her room, I don't know. My next question is, so I know that we don't have the Wellness Director, but we have an additional PE teacher, is that correct? Did I hear that correctly? The PE teacher that will not have an assignment, is that?
No, so we actually are going down a PE teacher, but the Director of PE Health and Wellness is posted.
Okay, so.
That position's not going away.
The position is not going away.
No.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Nelson. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so actually Melissa spoke to a lot of what I was thinking in terms of relationships and importance of art and music at the lower grades as well. You mentioned that it's fluid and that decision hasn't been made and I was wondering for the timeline, why will a firm decision be made on that? Probably.
Yeah. So, so this year, so I'm just going to, you know, so this year at East, the Teachers of Art, Music, PE actually took on the remote classes at those grade levels and because they had that time in their schedules to do so. And so, this kind of plays into a bigger picture about the virtual school, which we will need art, music, PE. And so, there's an opportunity, I don't want to influence the decision of the virtual school, which we'll get into that situation, but the, but one way to, to continue the full would be for them, for the, pretty much what we did this year, it would be that they'd be able to provide those, that instruction in the virtual school, which we had the model this year at work, right? It's, so they would stay in the same school, they're there to speak to Melissa's point, right? Always visible and that relationship piece, but they would just have, they could have online courses to teach in the virtual school. If we decide to do that, that decision isn't made yet. So, that's one influencing factor. And then, the other, you know, factor is just being physically responsible, right? And then I just look at that, the workload, right? I mean, it's always like trying to go back and forth, you know? If you have a teacher, let's just say the music teacher at Mullen Hall that has 25 sections to teach, but at East Falmouth, we have 12 sections. And I do understand, you know, but there's also that physical responsibility of, you know, having double sections in one school than the other. So, you charge me with being physically responsible, that has to be part of the decision-making. You know, our Director of Finance certainly, you know, if we're, it's a lot easier to, if we have to go down sections because we're losing our people cost, it's a lot easier to go down a couple over time than could we, could we kick the can down the road for a couple of years? We probably can, but at some point, then, that may be in more positions. And so, my other decision-making is this, is this, is this the right time, right? Maybe at this time, it would be, you know, work, waiting another year or two and continue to watch our enrollment. But I will say that I think when you look at our enrollment, it's going to be inevitable at some point. You know, the music teacher, and maybe this comes as a ghost because you heard the one music teacher tonight say that they had worked between two buildings before, right? So, there was a reason for that, maybe, and I don't know, but did enrollment go up? Were we able to have them at each school? You know, what was the reason for before where they had to be split between two schools? You know, I mean, those are all kind of considerations, I don't know if that, are there any answers or not?
That helps. And then you mentioned that, and options that the teachers would take on, you know, the remote piece of it. Are they aware of that, of being potentially part of their plate, shall we say? If, the hypothetical virtual school, right? Because that was mentioned, are they aware of?
So, it would be someone hired, so they would know through the job description. Because we would need to hire an additional.
Because there's.
So, right now, because we had a retirement and a resignation in art and music, we just haven't fulfilled those positions, right? So, if, that would be part of the job description of hiring.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be the current people. Or could be.
Right, because I thought when you said that it was tied to, I thought, maybe it's right, I thought it was tied to that that was an option for the teachers who would be half-time.
It could be, right? Because internal would always get the first option for that.
Right, and they could do both, they could do both.
Mm-hmm, yes. Yeah, but that's how the job description would be listed, right? It would be, you know, so many classes with virtual school and so many classes in-person, right? That's no hybrid, I just want to be clear, no one's doing hybrid next year. So, no one's teaching in a, you know, virtual and in-person setting. But you might have sections that are fully virtual and sections that are in-person to teach.
Okay.
I hope I'm making clear.
You are. I was going to make sure that, you know, that the teachers are aware that this could be an option.
It could be an option, yes.
I think that's important.
Yes. But we got some other stuff there.
Bill.
Yes, one of the things you mentioned was contracting individuals for the music area?
Yes, the, for element, element.
Can you expand on that a little bit, please? Contract individual coming into the school district?
Yeah, so, right now, so at the elementary level, our music teachers do not necessarily have the expertise to, to teach band, right? And so, our fourth grade students, that's where band is introduced. So, we often contract with someone, right now, we contract with someone that doesn't teach in our schools, but they actually teach band at Mullen Hall, for instance. Sometimes it is a internal person that may teach at a different school. We have a situation in our Morris Pond teacher, I believe, taught band at North as an additional because it's an after-school. So, yeah, so that's, that's not unusual to have someone different than the music teacher that's in the school to teach band, but we always make sure we have band.
Yeah, so the attempt is made to take an individual in the district who's a contract person to possibly move them around to cover band?
Yes, yes, but if not, if you go to anyone outside, absolutely.
I understand, if you're a contract, then it doesn't, yes.
Yes, but having band is the most important.
Yes, without question. Okay, thank you. And the other one is, how many retirements do we have this year? Because I know sometimes they're replaced and sometimes they're not and obviously, decline in enrollment means that when we look at position of retirement, say, do we need to fulfill this position? So, I'm just curious, is the number?
Yes. Dr. Santa? Can I call upon you, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear the question, how many?
How many retirements do we have this year? And I assume we're talking about Unit A, our teachers?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sure, I can actually look that up while we're, while we're on this.
And so, while she's looking that up, though, I think, I believe the conversation here is that we do have to assess, right? That happens every year, this is not unique to this year, but every year, when we have a retirement, we need to look at whether, Patrick does a great job with this, I'm going to, I'm going to actually channel Patrick here, is that if, right, if someone's retiring, we look to see if we continue to need that teacher. I believe he always says like a third basement, right?
Yeah.
Basement, we might need a extra basement.
We get on our first basement.
Yeah, and so, we look to see what the needs are in the district and.
I think it's important for the public to know how many retirements we have.
Yes. Yeah, I think we'll have that in a couple months.
So, related to, my question is related to that because I think the public also needs to understand that when they might hear, because we hired like a gazillion people this year, extra people.
Yes, we did.
And they, those were, those were only one-year positions, right? And are we keeping any of those people or, you know, because I think it's also, when you hear somebody, oh, they, they worked at Mullen Hall this year, but they're not working there last year, it's important to understand that they might have been a COVID hire and that's why they're not coming back, not because of.
Exactly, and that is, we can answer that now, but we actually have that as part of our presentation under the brands, because they were hired under the brands.
Okay.
Yep, but we are going to get there.
Giovanni, do you have any luck?
The retirees you want to know are all teachers or?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
While Giovanni looks for that.
We have fifteen retiring.
Fifteen retiring. Here you go, Bill. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Leah.
So, throughout these years of being on the School Committee, I know we've talked about this throughout the years of doing exit interviews. Doing exit interviews with why families leave Falmouth Public Schools. And I'm just wondering where we are in that thought process. Particularly last year, we, we did lose a lot of families, and I know other public school districts definitely went through this. And I think that one of the ideas with our new virtual school model would be to fulfill a need that families are really asking for. But I guess my, my question is, is there a way for us to really start embedding exit meetings or exit interviews or exit surveys with families? To get a better sense of what it is that we're not providing families? And I, I know that we do particularly see at kind of our middle school, high school time, that there are students leaving because we have more options locally at that time. But I, I do think it's throughout of, when any family leaves. So I'm, I'm putting.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, I, I totally respect that, and I think that, I know that we talked about it prior. This has been a different year, I can tell you, we are not implemented anything this year to be able to. To find that out, but. I totally respect that idea, and it would give us more insight and something that we could look forward to. I think that we could actually. Start with our, you know, any families that are leaving, you know, that, that don't return, I should say, right, for next year. And that's part of the data on the, around who we surveyed, that I'm gonna present in a little bit about the, the virtual school. And that group of parents that may or may not want something different, right?
Yeah, and I, I look at it as, it could be a pretty simple survey of like, you know, why did you leave? It might be that the family moved out of.
Yes.
The district, and that's, you know, an easy, but then that there is a narrative that there could be a problem where.
So we know why they leave, right? Because they, they have to identify that, it's the, I think it's the narrative about somehow, so, yes, I mean, we can, you could pull out all of the states they're moving out of upstate. Or they're, you know, so we have that kind of data. Or that they're, you know, out of eighth grade, moving to, they're going to, you know, upper K tech, or they're, so we have that, it's kind of that why, right? So.
So how do you know that gap?
Because when they exit, they have to, they have to enter that, so when, when we get record requests, when they come in, the secretaries actually identify that in the system.
Okay.
So we have that, we just, it's the why piece, right, that we really have.
Yeah, because I don't think parents fill out that information, it's more that the school requests it from the school, so then you would get that. It wouldn't be coming from the family about your why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's somehow, right, yeah. I mean, we certainly do when they choose homeschool, right? That's, that would be an area that.
Yeah.
I just have a follow-up question. I heard you say that some of the schools are heavy. On sections and some are light, and I'm, I'm gonna kick a hornet's nest and immediately. Get like laser beams at me, but have we considered redistricting elementary schools? I know, I've been asked, so this has been a question of mine since before I was on School Committee, and it prompted me to ask this years ago. Because our family is very close to an elementary school, yet we were zoned for another. So I feel like this might be a, a good opportunity to open that question up again. You know, I know that two of the elementary schools are heavy and two are light. And I would like to have a conversation about how, how do we move forward with that?
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the charge actually comes from the School Committee.
Great.
Happy to lead the process, it is a, a long, hardest process of, you know, forming stakeholder committees and looking at the needs and, you know, really examining the neighborhoods and, you know, knowing where our kids are. So there's a, it's a, it's a long process and, and that, I think, community engagement is so important.
I agree.
Especially for those, you know, the neighborhoods that might be impacted by a change.
I agree.
So it's nothing to be taken lightly.
Yes.
But if I'm not mistaken, I think that's as a request from the School Committee.
Okay, I, I'm officially requesting.
And so I, I'm wondering if we should look into what the process actually looks like?
Can we do a presentation?
And just find out how before we ask.
And is it a, is it a state regulated process, or can it be a Falmouth process, or? Like when you say?
Yeah, and I don't know, so that's why I'm saying, I think before making an actual request to do so, we need to find out what that actually looks like. I think it's, I don't know if it's a vote, I don't know anything about it, and so.
Okay.
So, we gotta do some homework.
I would just ask you to give me some time, be able to really research it, and before we come back to do that, and then we'll, we'll look at that process.
That's fine, that's fine, sure. That's. Great.
Yeah, I don't want, I just want you to. I've been through a process before, but I really want to make sure that, you know, Massachusetts law, you know, and what that entails.
Sure.
Yep, so we can do that.
That's a complete, but I definitely want to do everything the proper way, but I think that it, it, now's the time.
Okay, that looks like the end of staffing type thing, and then, I know you weren't done.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. So I, I wanted to give an update on our diversity, equity, inclusion officer process. Dr. Santa, could you give us a, a brief update on where we are with that position?
I guess it's.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I think so, go ahead, it's just quiet.
Okay. The DEI officer position has been posted for five weeks, going on six weeks today. We'll continue to accept applications as we fill up the interview committee participants. We have been reaching out to assemble an interview committee, making sure the committee is composed of a diverse group of individuals who represent Falmouth. We're asking school council and school personnel to recommend parent, educator, student, along with a school administrator. Among those who can lend their support. In vetting out a finalist, who can represent the racial, social. Gender diversity found in Falmouth. Our school councils hopefully will be sending some names to us, but also anyone who works in the system can certainly step forward and let me know if they're interested in serving on that interview committee. They can reach out to me at our, my Falmouth email, jay santa@falmouth.k12.m a.us. And we're planning our interviews sometime between June 28th and July 9th. Depending on availability, when you have an interview committee that's pretty large, it takes a lot to get. Schedules coordinated in order to get a couple of dates for us to interview everyone.
I'm wondering if we should have someone. From the School Committee sit in.
That's a good idea.
Okay, so. Joanna, would you mind sending information to me about what that. Obligation would look like, and we'll send it out to the School Committee and see if we have any takers on that.
Absolutely.
That'd be great, thanks so much.
Anything else? Yes, I do have a couple more things. If I may, I'm sorry, I know we're going on here. But this was an award. That was bestowed on two of our high school teachers. Jane Baker and Lauren Kenny. Our teachers are recognized for their transcend artists at Falmouth High School. They are receiving the annual awards for excellence in energy and environmental education. By the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and the Secretary's Advisory Group on Environmental Education. They were recognized educators who were delivering outstanding environmental, environmental education of new and creative opportunities in fields of energy and environmental science. And along with this recognition was an award of $350. I just wanna, this has been something that they have. Worked on for many years, and I, I've just absolutely loved the project. I just wanted to call, congratulate, or call this out and congratulate Jane and Lauren for all that you do in this area, it really benefits the students, so congratulations. And I cannot have an update without talking about the Disney's High School Musical. I'm so excited about, the students, both on stage and behind the scenes have just had so much fun. Making this production, and it really has been, I've been able to, to watch a few. You know, session and then watch some of the editing, and it's really been like making a movie, and I think it is so exciting that the students have been able to do something to this degree. But they've had a lot of fun, so on June 11th at 7 o'clock, June 12th at 1:00 and 7:00 p.m., and June 13th at 1:00. So all this weekend, starting Friday night, you can go to the Falmouth High School webpage, click on the free link. And we'll take you to the High School Musical. I just, I cannot wait to see our students in this movie, so, that they've created. And I think that concludes. Thank you.
Any last questions for Laura? Okay, so I have to apologize because my question is like so far way off topic, but. I would feel remiss if I didn't ask it, so it's a small town, obviously, and. Our schools have the biggest union. In the, in the town, and I'm sure I'm not the only one that has heard rumblings of a sick out. Where, and correct me if I'm wrong, that all the teachers and TAs call them sick on the same day. I don't know anything else about it because I've never been in a district that had one, but. I, I guess my question is. What happens then? Because, you know, if, I'm guessing it means the kids get to school and we don't have anybody to supervise them, and then we send them home to empty houses with no lunch. So if you can just speak to. Wh- what that, what would happen? Because, you know, I, I'm worried about what would happen, and I want to make sure that we're prepared, and sorry.
No, that's okay, I, I have been, you know, over the last week, I've also heard. Some, you know, rumblings of whether, you know, there would be a sick out, and I just want to say that I. I really hope that that would not happen, and I actually believe in the majority of our teachers, that they take their job extremely serious. And that, I mean, they really are here for our students, and. I, I just, in my heart of hearts, cannot believe that, that we would put our kids at, at risk. Because it is a safety issue now if that happens. So. If I, if I knew in advance, right, if I had that information, or at least fairly certain that that could happen, then I would call an emergency day, just like I would a snow day. Because I can't, I cannot take a risk of students coming into our schools and not having supervision for our students, so. And then we would just have to make that emergency day out during those five days that we have to be in the school year. So if it happened anytime between now and our scheduled end, end of the year date on June 22nd, then there would be a makeup day on the 23rd. That's if I had advanced notice. If I do not have advanced notice, and that would happen in the morning, then. You know, it's gonna be scrambling and all hands on deck. I absolutely know that our other unions. Have, you know, shared and said that they would jump in and support and do whatever they need to do if that would happen. So, you know, we always, you know, appreciate the ones that, that everyone's dedicated to. So from our food service, you know, our, our secretaries, our teamsters, you know, they have said that they'll be there for us. So it would be a, a matter of, you know, trying to have large, you know, spaces, students trying to supervise. Doing an all-call the families that come and pick the students up. It would be, I know disruptive. Process for the families, but safety absolutely has to come first.
And that's why I bring it up, because I'm, you know, I'm just worried about. You know, it was complete chaos when that happened at the high school because of COVID.
Yes.
It's different because it was the high school and those kids are going home and they're fine, but it's not the same when it's, you know, a third grader. And if we put them on a bus and send them home and we don't know who's there, if anybody, and we don't know how they're gonna have lunch, it's an entirely different story, and I'm just. So clearly you've heard about it too, and I, I just have to reiterate, I, I believe in our, I believe in our staff, I believe in our teachers, and I know how much they care about our kids. And I, I just have to believe that this, this would not happen.
But, but rest assured, you know, all of the administrators, you know, administrative team, and we do have, you know, many people that aren't the union, right? The non-union staff and the other unions are all ready to jump in and do what we need to do.
Okay, call me, I'll come, I'll come.
If we could help heads up so I can, A, prepare as a parent of younger people, and. B, if there's some kind of coverage I could get. At home, and then I could help, I, I don't know, I, I'm baffled, I didn't know this was a thing, I mean. As a parent of younger children, I, I really hope that this is not a thing.
I had never even heard of it until someone told me about it, so. Okay, sorry to throw that at you. Any last thoughts? Let's move on. Related grants, update on COVID-related grants. Patrick, are you?
Yeah.
There you are. Hi, Patrick.
Hi, so I've given you a memo that goes into some detail, and I'm thinking that it might be useful just to sort of go through the alphabet soup. Of the grants that have been used over the past year for, and then if people want to dive in with questions, but it's also useful to the public, to educate the public on that. Is that a, is that fair?
Yeah, that sounds great, thanks.
All right. So we're in a much better place than we were a year ago. And I'm just gonna go through in fairly linear fashion, the various federal, and in one instance, a state grant that was used to support the school district in the town. And help us get through the year. It started last, last year with what, what were referred to as the COVID cares or FEMA reimbursement programs. And these were reimbursement sources that were available through the town. These funds did not come directly to the school district, but it allowed us to purchase the enormous amount of supplies and materials that were required. For, to, to get our children back into schools, make sure our schools were safe. Abide by the CDC and the DESI guidelines, all of that type of things. And, and I've provided, I think it's about 14 pages of items that were purchased through those COVID cares funds. And I just want to describe the process. On, on how these purchases were made, so that even though it's a enormous amount of. Number of products and a lot of money, just the checks and balance process. First, you know, coordinating and working with, with the schools, we identified what was needed. Those, those requests and purchase orders were created. Folks in my office, the business office, checked to see, they would, they would literally always ask, is this, is this a COVID care purchase? So that was a first, first check. The, this then went, went down to Town Hall. We would get questions saying, what's this about? Can you describe why we're buying these things? And we would, we would either have the right answers, or we'd go back to the school and, and say, okay, what is that for? Can we describe what, what the use is? Then the town would submit for reimbursement. They had two processes for reimbursement. One, they had to go through FEMA, was the requirement to, to submit to FEMA initially to see if they would reimburse. And early on, they were the primary reimbursement agency that, but over time, they, it then went to the COVID cares reimbursement. And they would, they would identify whether or not they would reimburse. So, so there was a multiple levels of checks and balances as we purchased this enormous amount of supplies and materials that were required to bring the schools back on and keep everybody safe. So that's, that's the, the supplies and materials. Funding. The first, the first grant that was available directly to schools was a, what we referred to as the CBRF or COVID Relief Fund. Grant, and that, and that was, as I mentioned here, $700,650. And that was used to cover from the very beginning of the school year, our temporary staff. our temporary staff that was used. And we can go into a little more detail about what, who those temporary staff is. We're kind of repeating things that we've said early in the year, but we've provided supporting details for that. Then, it wasn't, go ahead.
Question? This was around the time there was also the tech grant, right? Wasn't there a tech grant also for technology?
That, that was at the, I think that was back in the, in the COVID cares time. So we were also able to purchase technology through that. The tech grant primarily was more of an infrastructure grant. That was, so it was a little different angle there. But we did purchase technology through, through some of these funds.
Okay, so it wasn't a specific tech grant?
Correct, correct. We had the ability to purchase technology through these grants too. So. So the CBRF was, was sort of the, how we got things opened in terms of all the temporary staff that we needed to bring on. And that was, needed to be spent by 12/30, so December 30th of 2020. We, at the time, there was no additional federal funding coming down. So we had, we were talking with the town about different methods of, of getting us through the second half of the year. And we had different plans on how to continue to fund those temporary help. But what did come along is the variations on ESER. So ESER is the term you're going to be, you will hear now or have heard and will continue to hear going forward. The first ESER or Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, so ESER 1 came in. And that was a relatively small grant of $390,143. And that continued, that, that came into the district in, in sort of that January, February timeline and allowed us to continue to cover the, the temporary staff that we had been paying through December with the CBRF. That is, as you can tell, was spent down quickly. And then we, ESER 2 came about. Now, there was some, the ESER 2 monies, there was some, it took some time to get those, those allocated. That grant was just approved for the school district in, in early April. And then we have a drawdown period that's required on the 20th of the month, and we've been drawing down this money incrementally. But as you can see from the soft write report that I've added, there is, there's a negative balance in that account. And we talked to, and that, that's not an issue, but because of the communication with the town from the very beginning on how we're spending and what's, what's happening with these grants. But it just shows you that this isn't like, you know, truckloads of money showed up in schools and we, we were able to do this all from the very beginning. It's, it's an ongoing process that we worked very closely with the school department, I mean, sorry, the town hall, to find ways to manage how, how we're getting through, how we got through this year. So, so there's complexity to how you spend these grants, there's how you apply for these grants. They are entitlement grants, so they, they are, the amount that is given to districts is allocated based upon an entitlement equation that is used to allocate money across the, across districts, across the state, a federal equation effectively. But there's complexity, there's been complexities all along the way on this stuff. So we're in, we're, we will be spending down ESER 2 through the end of this year and into the fall. And that's one and a half million dollars. And then over the summer, and we're going to be very thoughtful about this process, and the superintendent, I'm sure, can talk about that a little bit, is applying for the ESER 3 funds. And ESER 3 funds would be carrying us through, at minimum right now, at minimum, three additional fiscal years. So it's a planning for three fiscal, three fiscal years of using these ESER 3 funds. And there's some discussion already mentioned by the commissioner that, that it should be extended to five years in terms of our planning for use of these funds. So, so there'll be a lot more information, discussion about what we could do or will do with ESER 3. You're going to jump into one of the topics in a, in a moment now. But, but that's kind of where we're at. We've, I'm really proud of the people in, the clerical folks in our office at town hall who've been so supportive of helping us do this, that the amount of work that they've been involved in and making sure this happens has been extraordinary. And, and we couldn't have done it without them. So I just want to get in a little plug to some of, some of our folks who work behind the scenes. So I'm going to stop right there. If we need to, if we want to sort of repeat or jump in into the details of what our staffing looked like with these CBRF and ESER 1, ESER 2 funds, that, that's fine. Those are the temporary staff that we've been mentioning, and we've talked about that previously. But, does anybody want to follow up with a question and that can?
I have a question.
Leah's got one for you, and so does Melissa.
So just as, as you're describing all of these grants, and I'm thinking about all of the administrative work with these grants, were we able to allocate some of this funding to be able to provide some support for our school district to be able to manage these grants?
We, I'm looking at Sonya, I'm looking at Joan, I'm looking at Joanne. They're the folks, the work got done. We just got the work done.
So it became more of a team effort around people having different roles and then?
Yes, there was an enormous amount of work done by the administrative team.
Yeah, because these did not exist before. And then you're putting this on a school system with all of this work. It's wonderful to have all this funding, but it's very hard for a school system that's also enduring a pandemic to be able to handle this.
Yeah.
So is that maybe part of the plan moving forward around maybe supporting this a little bit more?
It's a good idea. That should be on the list, I'm sure.
Especially if it's multi-year. Like, it was different if we didn't know, you had to spend the money down in six months or something, like in December. You know, that's, by the time you get somebody hired and trained. But if we're looking at a multi-year thing.
Right.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Melissa?
Patrick, so are the, the ESER funds are not COVID-related? Am I reading that correctly?
They, they are COVID-related. They have to be for, for COVID funds. At least the ESER 1 and ESER 2. The ESER 3 is broader description. What we did in, just as a way to, to sort of bring some sense to this is we, as a district, decided, you know, we wanted to use these funds only for certain purposes. You know, the temporary staffing purposes as, as we, what we handled with the CBRF and the ESER 1 grants. You know, that, that was our, our internal logic so that we didn't have to guess, okay, how did we fund that purchase?
Okay, so I'm thinking forward with the ESER 3. And it could, per the commissioner, it could go up to five years. And it looks like, in your notes, it looks like potential 7.5 million. Could that be used for our staffing that we're having issues with or no?
So, so I think one, so this is an important discussion. Every business, business official in Massachusetts is probably having a similar discussion with their superintendent and their school committee. What you have to be very, very clear about is who is being handled out of your local budget and the services that are being provided out of your local budget, which is, will be here in 10 years or 20 years, versus what positions, what temporary positions, what, what projects, what vendors you might attach to a grant that by definition will be spent down. And I just want to bring back to, to folks who might have a memory, and I'm looking at Bill Ryder, who might have a memory of the, you know, 2008, 2009, 2010 economic recession and the American Recovery Act. I think that's what it was called. There were districts that by 2012, 2013, 2014, because all that grant money was spent down, had enormous layoffs. And it was extraordinarily painful for those districts. So you do have to think about these in sort of parallel paths, that there's, there's your local budget, what does your local budget support? What should it be covering? What does your enrollment trends look like? What should they be covering? And then look at any, these grant monies that in no, by definition, they're going to be spent down within a number of years. So that's why many districts are using these funds to, to support or help support some capital projects also. They're looking for, you know, to, we were fortunate that our children were able to get back into the schools on an ongoing basis. Our schools are in pretty decent shape, relatively speaking. A lot of schools, school districts had some inadequate facilities and will be using some of this money to try to remedy that. So they view these as one-time dollars for one-time projects. So, so it's, it's a discussion that we need to have and always be considerate of. But, you know, it's a, it's a parallel path that we need to think about.
Thank you. Patrick, can I follow up on something that you just said? So you said it can be used for capital projects? Can it be used for incredibly large capital projects, like say, you know, a roof?
So.
I'm just thinking it would be nice to reduce the burden on the town.
Yeah, right, 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 right. So, so, so the details of, of what the ESER 3 can be used for, it's going to come out in a, in a booklet that is probably 110 pages long. That hasn't been produced yet. And that's expected this summer. The, the early discussion would be that if it had an impact on, I'm going to just say HVAC-related things. But that would be the most direct impact on, on, on sort of the health and safety of a, of a school building. I suspect that's the direction the regulations are going to go as opposed to putting on a new roof, which should be part of a, a school district's and town's regular capital program. But since sort of the guidance on how you handle HVAC systems have changed, then, you know, do you need to, do you need to alter your HVAC systems? If yes, then you could use some of these ESER 3. But we do not, we do not have the details on the, on the ESER 3s. But these are some of the discussions that I've been part of. I'm sure the superintendent and Sonya have been part of, you know, these, this is what's out there and being discussed.
That's fair. Thank you. Andrew, do you have a question?
Yes, Patrick, your last bullet of the memo is talking about needs for temporary staffing and supplies for next year and the estimate of approximately one and a half million from those ESER funds. So it was my understanding that we're, that temporary staffing was going away. So could you explain a little bit about what that looks like?
So we're not, we're not quite there yet, but I'm, I'm just making a rough estimate on some of the, our needs for, to continue our, our nursing staff and, and health assistance, to continue our school-based subs, to continue some of our monitors, those types of things. And then, and that, and I'm making a sort of a ballpark estimate of what that might cost over the course of the year based upon our experience this past year. And then I do know that the cost of, as you all know too, any kind of supplies and materials costs have gone up in a significant manner. So as an example, the buying, buying those MERV 10, 11, 12, 13 rated filters to go into our HVAC systems, they're four times the cost of what the filters that we used to purchase. Those types of things will still be, we'll still be wanting to do, you know, sort of intensive cleaning in, in maybe not as, as frequently as we do now, but on a regular basis, the supplies and materials for that. So that's kind of the direction we're going in, in an estimate that I've, I've put out there at, on June, in June of 2021.
That's great. Thank you. Any last questions for Patrick?
Sorry, I have one last. I'm sorry, I'm chewing the weeds with this in my own work. But the ESER 3, from, from what I understand about ESER 3 is there's going to be a big process to determining how to spend the money, like stakeholder groups and things like that. So that probably, we will probably get a plan from you around what that would look like?
I can actually speak a little bit to it right now.
Oh, okay.
So with the staff, our entire team, our board have plans this week and next week. We've already started Lawrence on Monday. But we have a session set up at each school where staff can talk to us reflecting on this year and then moving forward for next year, what they would like to keep, what they feel the needs are moving forward. So we're, so we're going to cover the staff before we're actually done this year. And then over the summer, we are planning to go out to community centers, different locations in the community and actually talk. We'll do a couple virtual forums for families that that would be easier. And just kind of reinstate or remind people of our, that info, the Falmouth, just to be able to give feedback if that's easier. So kind of a multiple way of just finding out how things have gone this year, you know, what they feel the needs are that's going to be moving forward. So, you know, between, you know, getting out and meeting with people, having, you know, forums, surveys, you know, allowing for the email and checking all that to give input about the ESER funds and how will these be done.
Because it does seem like there would be a good opportunity to also look at equity access and opportunities for all students and families in this piece. So I guess that's a future question from me around how will that be done in this, getting feedback from the community?
Well, so the whole equity piece is making sure we're getting into the communities where we may not otherwise. And so I do have some ambassadors that were on the advisory committee that have, you know, volunteered to actually, you know, help gather people, do the introductions that are in the various communities. So actually going to the communities is one way that we were addressing that equity and access piece.
Makes you go into the Inverian Museum.
Yes, and that's what I'm hoping.
I like what you're saying about, you know, meeting everybody with everybody to try to assess what our needs are going to be. But I, I think, Patrick, the question I have is, I'm looking at this going, okay, now we have to apply for those, apply for that money, I'm assuming through the state. And one of the things that I'm interested in is, it could total up to 7.5 billion dollars. Could, could, that's an interesting word. And it could be a three-year program and it could be a five-year program. So then do we give you the money out over a longer period of time, which means basically less each year? So there's just some concerns that I have when I look at ESER 3 and say, that's a big question mark right now. And you're not going to know until probably the last minute, which is very typical in the world of, of government. So that's a concern that I have. And just, I just look at it for you and say, yeah, I hope you get the money. It would be great to utilize that additional staffing because I know it's needed. But, I'll leave it at but.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
So, you know, I mean, being thoughtful about the planning. So, you know, I mean, being thoughtful about the planning for three years because we know that. But also know that if things cost less or, you know, there's, you know, usually things shift and there's additional money, we have a couple other years to spend down, right? So if you, Kelly, you had the question about the, what was the staffing?
Right, yes.
So Joannie, do you want to go over the staffing that we have spent through our S R funds?
Yes, can you hear me okay? We had through our S R funds, two nurses, that includes our public health nurse and our floating nurse, seven classroom teachers, certified specialist teacher, support for the instructional professional staff, one and a half teacher assistants. We did hire half clerical support, six health assistants, which were really important to make sure that every school was covered. We already had staff, health assistants on board, so we brought in six more. 11 staff assistants at the secondary level and 24 school or recess lunch monitors between the four elementary schools and Morse Pond. We also had about 40 substitutes. We had different substitutes at times come in and substitute for a while and perhaps, and even staff assistants move into other positions that became vacant during the year due to illness or leave of absence or other reason. So we found ourselves consistently filling positions as other, as people we hired moved into other vacancies that became vacancies after the school year launched. As of today, we have staff that are continuing with us next year. That includes the two, the, the two nurses, the certified specialist teacher, one and a half teaching assistants that have clerical support, the health assistants, we have found that it is important for us to have them. Hopefully the instances of COVID-19 all over, but in the Cape and in Falmouth won't overtake our system. But we want to make sure that we are provisioned for the support that might be needed in the fall. We have eight monitors that are coming back and approximately 30 substitutes. We're looking at having building substitutes very specific to a building again for next year. Just playing it safe, doesn't seem like we're in a position where we can start having people bounce from building to building on, on any kind of massive scale. So we're, we're working on making sure that each building has its identified building substitutes that show up every day and then a cadre of people that can be called on a day-to-day basis if the needs one particular day is higher than, than another. We anticipate additional individuals continuing, but we're still in the thick of hiring and securing folks. It's a two-way street, so we've invited some folks to continue on and we're waiting for them to let us know if they're going to continue to work with us for, for next year. But I have to say that it was very critical to have people coming onboard in this auxiliary way with one mission, which was to support the students and the staff at the school and help get us through this, this pandemic year and have the ability to pivot when you didn't know what exactly was going to happen from one day to the next. And, and they showed up and they stepped up and for that we're immensely grateful. It was very difficult for everyone. You can't find a person who did not get touched by the pandemic in one way or another. And some hit harder, but regardless, everyone was, was touched by this pandemic. So having additional people that came onboard and rolled up their sleeves and were willing to be part of the solution was just essential.
Thank you, thank you, Joannie. And then adding on to, we have one more that we are in the process of applying for as we speak. And this is for the Summer Acceleration Academy. And so it is an entitlement grant and we, Falmouth has been designated with $85,000 for one-week academy in the summer. And it's pretty prescribed. How it's for literacy skills for upcoming, arising first grade and second grade and math academy for the rising third and fourth grade students that we're applying for. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Teyer to tell us a little bit more about this. But then we've also added some additional summer opportunities that I'm going to have Sonya start. And then Joan, just again, talk about, a little bit about the E S Y briefly, because I know we've talked about it before, but just want to make sure that our, our families in addition to the school committee hears about our summer plans again. Because I think that's important as it's coming up. So, Dr. Teyer?
Thank you. We're going to continue this year with Falmouth High School and Lawrence Schools' summer school programs. You know, they had some adjustments as we came through the lessons of COVID, but keeping those two programs on track is incredibly important for us. A program that we have had available to our elementary students in the district is through the National Inventors Hall of Fame, which is Camp Invention, and it's run independently through that agency. And Michael Irving at North Falmouth has served as the director for Camp Invention in the past. And so he's been in conversation with Patrick. And more recently, we, Mike and I spoke and we're going to be able to double the number of weeks. So we're going to move from one week at North Falmouth to two weeks for elementary students with the second week being hosted at T Ticket. And through the additional funds that we're receiving, we're going to be able to offer Camp Invention to Falmouth Public School students in the eligible grades and no cost to our families. So information on that is, Mike and I spoke today. So the Inventors Hall of Fame has a couple of steps that we now have to fulfill so we can get the flyers updated and available to us so we can get them home to families to be able to register their children. And unlike last year where we offered the Summer Learning Academy for students across five years, ah, five years, five weeks, sorry, not five years, five weeks. We're adjusting that a little bit with some feedback that we received. At the end of the program, we met and I solicited feedback. And then over the course of the year, some additional conversations around the program, both from student and family experiences as well as from colleagues' experiences. So we're going to offer a summer learning challenge, which offers activities and opportunities for families to encourage literacy, learning and reading practice and to encourage math facts and math practice with some maker activities and some recommended movies as well, where we may be able to host drop-in activities. That's the piece we're, we're still working on. And then finally, as you mentioned, and Doris just shared, also looking at the Summer Acceleration Academy, which will have two programs, the literacy piece for our youngest learners and then a math acceleration for upper elementary students. So we're continuing to get everything sort of lined up so that we can get the details and information out to all of our colleagues with that, that level of specificity that we know that they need to talk with families and then ultimately the information to the families.
Sorry, Lee, I thought Joan was going to go next. Go ahead.
All right, I'm just, is, will transportation be provided?
We'll try.
There are a couple of these opportunities are largely virtual. So obviously that's a question there. And I am remiss also, Leah, in you asking the question. We also have our Summer Language Academy run by our ELD team, our English Language Development Team. I know that they're looking at transportation and that's a question I think I need to step back and look at from the Lawrence and High School perspective. I don't believe they have in the past. And Joan, I know E S Y has a transportation piece, which is where you're headed. So, yeah, it impacts different programs, I think differently, especially based on volume and need.
So just putting my insight into this is that I, I know what a challenge it is for families during the summer. Especially it's our peak seasonal time to be able to provide transportation to their children. So especially for our more targeted accelerated programs.
So last year we did offer during the academies. I think Patrick needs to kind of weigh in here. If we can, if, if at all, we can offer, especially through the academy week, I'm, the acceleration week, sorry, that academy, you know, would be good. So I guess, Patrick, I was making assumptions since we were able to do that last year, but I cannot say that we had a confirmation on that. Probably need to look through the transportation office, Patrick?
Yeah, it's, I, we're, we're going to need to map this out. We have, you know, we, obviously we have our obligations for our special education students who continue with school and just map it out for the year.
All right, well, thank you for letting me share out some information about E S Y. I know I gave you some information at the last meeting, but I wanted to kind of recap that. And to answer the question about transportation for extended school year services, students that are getting the academic instruction, which is just more of the, the smaller sessions, they actually, they provide their own transportation. Transportation is provided to all of our students in our programs, which is typical throughout the, the, excuse me, the school year. So we will be offering again, like I said, the academic instruction that focuses more on content area and that's for students that, you know, need the support in math ELA. There could be half-hour sessions, hour sessions as recommended by the, the special education team. We will be providing related services, OTPT speech as needed, counseling as needed, as indicated from the I E P and the team. And then we also have all of our program sessions. So we've got, you know, early elementary, we have our preschool kindergarten programs. We'll have our preschool TIP programs, our TIP kindergarten program, our connect programs for at the elementary level, middle and high school. We've got our, our learning center, the TLC program. So all of those programs that we have during the school year, we run those programs, those six-week programs throughout the summer, including all the way up through our, you know, so for preschool all the way through our post-grad programs. I do believe I shared with you that what we're doing this year is we're increasing the students that were typically, E S Y has to be determined by the, through the team process for students that would have the potential for substantial regression during times away from school. So it is a data-driven team decision that's made. We are being more flexible with that to ensure that we're providing appropriate special education services to our students to ensure that they're ready to enter back into school come this fall, recognizing the impact that from the time when we went remote last March and where we were this school year, that we're also making sure that that's another opportunity in which we can provide some of those special education COVID compensatory services. Some changes that we're doing to our programming, to increase the programming and increase some of the opportunities, the social emotional opportunities and peer opportunities and just social skill opportunities. We're doing thematic units for the week, so each week we'll have a different theme. And within the weeks, we're building in either community outings or special, kind of special events and special guests, things such as, you know, Marcus musician. We've got the ice cream trucks, we have guest readers, things like that, that will implement that. And then this year, we're also piloting a peer model component into our programming. So we want to make sure that we have the opportunity where we're providing very targeted explicit instruction this as, as driven by the I E Ps. But there were also blending in more social and peer opportunities within that. I believe I also shared last year that last, excuse me, last school committee meeting, that last summer, we had the ability to offer additional counseling support throughout the summer and we will be providing that. That's not part of E S Y. Any students that receive counseling through E S Y, that will be still provided through our summer school, through our extended school year programming. But we will have additional counseling support for students, any identified students and/or families that would require anything from weekly counseling sessions to check-ins, to bi-weekly check-ins. And again, our school adjustment counselors and the teams in the schools are looking to reach out to families that they think may benefit that. But if there's any family out there that feels that they would benefit from that, please either reach out to the school adjustment counselor in your building or please reach out to me and we will ensure that we get you set up with a counselor. And transportation, I do believe I said that in the original question. But so our students in our programs for E S Y will certainly be receiving transportation to and from the programs. So I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information you may have.
For the peer piece, do people apply for that? Or how does, how is that working within the program?
So our coordinators, our special ed coordinators, and those, that's Amri Iandoli, who is our special ed building administrator at Mullen Hall, and Audrey Riley, who was our special ed coordinator at Falmouth High School, are working with our teachers and the school-based teams to help select peer models. If anyone does have a, an interest, if there's parents out there that have an interest in having their child, again, this is a piloted program, so we're looking to build this as we continue, you know, with each year. Please feel free to reach out to me and I can make sure that we're connected in the appropriate fashion to talk through that. Thank you, Leah, that was a great question.
Questions for Joan?
Okay, thank you to my team for all the conversation around the grants and then the, the summer programs in addition to the Summer Acceleration Academy. Thank you. And sort of related, we're going to move on to the virtual school, which also has to do with. Great. So, yeah, so just, I just wanted to remind everyone how quickly this came about. It was the week before we went into our spring, spring break. The D C had provided a webinar and discussion around the possibility of having a virtual school. Again, this comes on the heel of the decision. Christian O'Reilly had stated that there would be no hybrid learning next year. So, you know, or remote options. But this would, if, if families wanted to choose into a remote type option, it would be through a virtual school and districts had an opportunity. My team talked about it very quickly, it was right before break. The, the application was due to D C on May 6th, which actually gave us nearly three weeks by the time we did that one-week vacation. We worked, we decided if we didn't start working on that application and get it in, then we would never have that opportunity. So we began work on it right away. When we, you know, the part of that is learning what the expectations were. When we, you know, figured out that we could do the, that it was possible to get the application actually completed in that amount of time, we presented to you on May 4th. At that time, we'd had the application, you know, nearly thought through. And the discussion that we had here at school committee was very helpful. And we wrapped up that application and we did get it submitted by May 6th. At which time, we then immediately developed our survey. And the families that we decided to survey were the families that had been in remote the entire year. And that includes the families that chose to be in remote, even when we brought all of our students back. They're right after break of April, I believe it was the 26th, through the end of the year. So we had 500 and some families that still remained remote kindergarten through 12th grade. And remember, we were, we've been in full time this year with our elementary schools, but we still had families that were choosing remote the entire year. And then we also included in the survey our families. our families that chose homeschool, right, that had either been in homeschool all along or chose homeschool for this year. So we had 600 plus families that the survey went to. And we selected those families because we, we assumed that if everyone was coming back in person, then in person is that that choice for that family. So we wanted to concentrate around getting, understanding a little bit more about what the needs are with those families. We did not get 600 and some surveys back. And we did extend it for another week, I believe it was. We did get 277 responses. Of the 277 responses, 39.4% of the responses said yes, that they would, they would like the virtual option. After we removed, it was about 119 students, but when we removed the school choice, because this it has to, the virtual school is only for Falmouth residents only. So if you school choice into the district, they do not have the option of attending the virtual school. So once we removed school choice students, and also there were undecideds. So they said, yes, maybe, but I want to see how things go over the summer with COVID. And, and then, you know, so we kind of took that into account that, you know, it's fine if they do come, but let's not count on that, right? At this time. And then there were some duplicates through there. So we ended up having 94 students from kindergarten through 12th grade. That doesn't mean that that's the only students. If we did decide to proceed in this manner, of course, it would be a full enrollment process, of which then we can, we would go through and, and those other families would definitely have that option to enroll. But looking at the bare minimum right now, if we had 94 families that chose, we had three kindergarten students, three first grade students, and three second grade students. This would be very difficult to offer a virtual option at this grade level, although it's, you know, it's, it's easy to, or I'll say easy, it's, it's doable to have a two grade split, right? So a kindergarten first grade or first grade, second grade. But it would be very difficult to have a teacher able to teach, you know, the nine students, but it's across three, you know, three preps of grade level. So that is something that we definitely need to consider. We do have, in the third and fourth grade, there, there are 15 students, which is, you know, just to start out with, if that's a third, fourth grade split with 15 students is very.
15 total or 15 each?
15 total. Yeah, so I'm just saying, so you would do.
I just want to make sure I'm following.
At fifth and sixth grade, there are 17 students, which we'd still need, at the fifth and sixth grade, we would need a teacher that would teach the E L A and social studies, and then a teacher that would teach math and science, right? Because that's, that's kind of our, how our split is. But that would be, you know, kind of a class that teach 25th and sixth grade. And then we had seven students, 10 students at seventh grade, 10 students of eighth grade. And then our ninth grade, we had 44 students at the high school level. So.
So that's 44 ninth through 12.
I'm sorry.
That's 44 12.
Yeah, it's 52 at the high school. I'm sorry, I did remember that number wrong.
That's nine, that's nine through 12 though?
Nine through 12, I'm sorry. Is that the question?
52 at the high school.
52 at the high school, right?
But that's inside.
Through Falmouth, right?
Hmm?
Because.
Are they not adding up?
No, I'm just being.
We're just starting out.
In the last one, starting.
We're talking about current kindergartners, right? Three current kindergartners, are these?
Next year.
But we didn't have any pre K or in pre K. Okay, so these are rising, okay, rising K. Okay, so then.
Yes, great. Okay, so 52. I'm giving you the grades for next year, what that would look like.
Right, right, right. And it was 52 for nine, 10, 11, and 12 total. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so, so I want, I guess there's, I mean, I want to, I just want to kind of give you, you know, the kind of the lay of the land, what happened with the survey. And then, and then I'm gonna, before we get into, because I think what we really should talk about are some of the issues or concerns around that. But before we go there, I'd like Dr. Teller just to tell us a little bit about what that might look like in the virtual, why we think we're prepared, what's the structure, what the schedules are. And then if Dr. Woodward would just add about, you know, the supports and making sure that our students, the support. So before we really kind of get into a discussion about maybe the pros and cons, right?
Yeah, because I'll probably end up answering some of our questions.
Yes, exactly. Okay, Sonya's first?
Yep.
Take it away, Sonya.
Thank you. So one of the things we started to discuss when we were looking at this was that Falmouth High School was sort of the first to step out with virtual learning almost 12 years ago, could actually be a little longer. When they first introduced virtual high school as an option, and then began to pilot an online credit recovery program. Over time, the virtual high school has sort of faded to the side with a number of our colleagues using the early L M S system of Moodle, and then partnering with the collaborative and with other agencies over time to develop virtual learning. So we have a bit of a history in working with and supporting some of these virtual opportunities. COVID certainly opened our eyes to some of the other ways to think about it from the perspective of an exclusively virtual education, which is a fit for some. And so as we, as we were looking at that and listening to some of the successes that we were hearing from, from families who are appreciating this as another way of approaching schooling for their children, we also started to look at, you know, are we prepared for this undertaking? And certainly, there's a significant scale of professional learning in which we engaged this year. We secured adequate technology, you know, in adding, not only making sure that we have Chromebooks available to every student, going back to our earliest learners, and then making the shift next year for earliest learners to iPads, but the mobile technology for teachers, the addition of the hotspots, following with digital tools. So there are tools and resources, and then continuing on and looking a little bit more in depth at the pedagogy. And does it mean we know all of the strategies that we need for effective instruction in the virtual world? No, and they continue to involve, excuse me, evolve. But one of the key pieces too is that we just had an inaugural cohort complete the graduate certificate for teaching in the virtual world. And, you know, the, the dialogue that's come from there and the feedback that I know that they'll soon be giving to the program director about, about some growth that's needed in the program has also kind of led us into a conversation to show that if this is in fact a need for, you know, a number of our students and their families to help them continue to access education, then it is something that we could help in providing. As the conversations have continued, and we've looked sort of at some of the other unique circumstances that may also be a fit with virtual learning, we found ourselves reflecting on opportunities for some of our competitive athletes who have chained together independent studies or withdrawn for a period of time and had to come back. We looked at some of our students who may leave us for a portion of the year, return to another country, another state, but not actually enrolled despite the best intentions of expecting to enroll in that transition. And we also looked at, again, reflectively and somewhat anecdotally, needing to look at it more quantitatively, but some of our competitive athletes who have to withdraw because we don't have an option for them to continue with us while they're in some form of extended training or competition. So as we looked at our history and we looked at the lessons we've learned through COVID, but also some of the other strategy and professional learning and student circumstances, sort of seeing them all together and knowing, as Superintendent Dur pointed out, that if we, if we didn't begin to move forward at the application now, that the door would close before we knew whether or not we wanted to move forward.
Thank you. I think we should save questions for all, for the discussion, if that's okay. I'm sorry. So Joan, yeah, Joan, can you share?
Certainly. So again, with the virtual school, we learned that it can be a learning environment, as Dr. Teller had said, for, for many. It supports the social, emotional, and behavioral needs, excuse me, behavioral health needs of some of our students that, you know, as we found through COVID, it gave us the opportunity to see some students that truly struggle in our more traditional school environment, actually that excelled and thrived during the remote learning opportunity that they had. So that is an opportunity for, for some of our students. It also allows for our students with any more significant medical needs, or medical fragile students. In some instances, for students that are considered eligible for long term home hospital instruction, and for any students that may need an alternative setting based off of their special ed needs. So there is a, you know, a population of our current student body that would actually benefit from some less traditional and more flexible opportunities such as the virtual school. And as Dr. Duer had mentioned, with the plan that we're putting in place as we look toward implementing a virtual school, all students would still be provided with all of their special education related services and counseling support that they do require. So that would be certainly a necessary and essential component of providing the supports and services for all students that may elect for virtual school if we were to move forward.
Okay, so before I turn this over to Patrick, to talk a little bit about the fundings, just, just so you know, when we presented the data, you know, we were first looking at, you know, I mean, are these enough students? Is there enough interest even to continue to consider this? And then that was, that was one. And then the second milestone that I think we had to talk about is, we got the feedback, which was due on June 4th. We received the feedback, and really mostly was clarification and some questions. So as far as the application process, I just want to assure the committee that, that, that we absolutely can manage that. So, so those were kind of a couple of the pieces we need. And the third big piece we need to talk about are the the financials. So I'll turn this over to Patrick now.
All right.
Sure. So, so this was news or new to me, a new idea to me. So I was able to do a little bit of research and, and guess what? Parents do have the option to elect to send their children to virtual schools in the state of Massachusetts. There's TECA and, and I think it's Greenfield. Did I get that right? Thank you. Programs that are virtual schools licensed, endorsed, supported by, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. What, what is interesting about this financially is that if, for example, you know, 90, 100 parents all of a sudden decided that they wanted to do that, it would be no cost to them, assuming the, the enrollment in those schools is still available. But it would cost the, in, in, in Falmouth's case, it would cost the town through the schools approximately $8,800 per student who enrolled. So it's, it's, some of you know the, the school choice math of, of outgoing dollars and incoming dollars of about $5,000. So it's, it's a more expensive version of a, of a school choice decision. So from that perspective, you know, the, the we have to view it as, okay, there is this option out there that if, if parents and children in Falmouth are seriously interested in that, in this, they could take this, potentially take this option, and it would cost the town a significant amount of money. So then you look at it and say, okay, how much does it, would it potentially cost to run this program? And, you know, the, the sort of beside, behind the scenes work that I was doing with Sonya in terms of sort of mapping this out is, I just came up with her and said, can we do this for less than, than, you know, 10, 10 F T Es or fewer? And, you know, the math was, 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 at this time, made that, made that possible. The fact that we also have the, this, these E S R dollars out there that would, would not be touching our local budget is another interesting piece on, okay, maybe, maybe this is how we get this ramped up and started. And there would be no, no potentially negative impact on, on the school district. Then you think out three to five years from now, and you're saying, okay, how do you, you're, you're not necessarily losing teachers, which, which is, we spent a lot of time talking about this. You're able to sustain those teachers in, in Falmouth. That's a, that's an important benefit as well as, well as supporting the number of children. So financially, it's kind of an interesting discussion. It's, it's a, you know, I was, I was truly on the fence about this until Dr. Duer shared the response from parents on this. And I was like, that, that's something that, that is, that I, I didn't realize how many parents would really be interested. And then we started brainstorming all the situations that families in Falmouth might be in, in where, where they would need to take in, or want to take advantage of this virtual, virtual school. So it, from a financial perspective, I think there's ways to handle this without impacting the local budget. You know, what the future of virtual schools is, is, is interesting, but we know they are, they are already a success in highly sustainable in two location, not two locations, two situations in, in the state of Massachusetts. So I think, I think it's an interesting discussion for the committee.
So some of the issues, if we want to move to the issues now, that I mean, that we're seeing.
It's a huge, it would be a huge change. And so there's a lot of philosophical considerations.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, the first thing, I mean, obviously, is looking at the needs of the families and whether, you know, what they choose. Whether philosophically we agree or don't agree. We talk about personalized learning, we talk about meeting the needs of our students. And there's, you know, a, you know, a portion of our families that are saying that this would meet their needs. So, I mean, it's a, it's a consideration that we need to have. Enrollment, we've talked about enrollment and the drop in enrollment. And so if families would choose a virtual option, whether it's with Falmouth or somewhere else, you know, if we don't have that option, then obviously we, we may lose some of the virtual students. Some of the things that, that we've talked about are, you know, pre COVID, it may not have been on the radar to think about, right? But now that we've gone through the year of COVID and students have been successful with a remote option, it may be more of a, you know, serious choice for some families to choose one of these other options over coming in in person. And, you know, and there is, you know, you know, I like to keep our clippers. Just, just a thought there. One year versus many year, right? Because when we first talked, part of our conversation at the school committee meeting on, on May 4th was, you know, is this a one year option for families that may not be ready to come back, right? And that was some of the feedback on the survey, right, is that they have medically fragile children, and the COVID thing is still, you know, and this, this is really a nice option for that. So if it's COVID related, you know, do we look at it as a one year to continue to meet the needs of the families? And then evaluate at the end of the, the year, get the feedback and decide whether, you know, is this really, you know, well beyond COVID? And is this a viable option to continue or not? And I think that is something that would have to, you know, be discussed at the end of the year.
Right.
Especially with the feedback from our families. There's some concern that this is going to take staffing away. And, you know, we've looked at it every way it's going to add staffing. Dr. Santa had mentioned, you know, the staffing that we had, we had, you know, several additional teachers that. We had, you know, several additional teachers that were on a one-year temporary. This is a way of being able to keep those teachers. You know, we were able, you know, we had to, you know, basically say we we didn't have a space for them for next year. Because we had, you know, because of being six feet apart, right? We had to create new classrooms and teachers, but and then we had teachers that did the remote option, right? Next year, we're going all back in, you know, no, no spacing. Considerations next year, so we're going back into the classrooms like we had before. But this would be a way of keeping some of our staff that we had hired last year. The, and then the other concern I hear, and I'm going to let, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Woodward and and Patrick to talk about would funds that go to the virtual school take away from the funds for the in-person school? And so I'm gonna, I just want to turn around and talk because I think that's another big issue that we want to talk about. Because the interest note, but let's explain why.
So if, as it relates to special education programming, I just want to be very clear about this. The the local school district, every local school district has obligations to provide a level of special education. And and school districts on a, on an annual basis are reviewed, audited for what's referred to as maintenance of effort. And it's it's a straightforward calculation that the auditors do when they take into account what's been going on in the school district. And, you know, there's there, you have some normal fluctuations based upon enrollment trends or identification. But that is very clearly something that is taken seriously by by the school district and all the regulators that that review what school districts do. So so clearly, if we're going to move forward with something like this, we we would be identifying the ESR-related funds to to handle any costs associated with it as opposed to the local budgeting funds.
And just to to weigh in, I don't think that there's a whole lot more I can add other than to what Patrick said, that maintenance of effort will really going to be the gatekeeper to ensure that that does not happen. And that is, you know, highly monitored and audited and, and, you know, we're obligated to that level of compliance.
I don't want to interrupt. I'm just, I'm so, I have a running list.
Yeah, I think you should go to questions and discussion. You know, I mean, that's.
Okay, so can I, I'm gonna jump in first because my question is exactly what you just said. And I don't think, it's just because I don't think I understand. So if the question is, let's, let's say there is seven point five million dollars in ESR money. If we're not spending a million of it on a virtual school, wouldn't that million dollars be going to something else that we might need in the district? Is that, am I misunderstanding, you're saying that that's not the case? But I don't understand why.
That's a fair question. That's a fair question. Prioritizing what we want to use ESR3 funds for is is part of this overall discussion. This is, this is a a first idea that we have real data from a group of parents saying, I am very interested in this this virtual school option. And by the way, maybe they did know this, maybe they didn't know this. If it, they do have this option to leave Falmouth. It's, we are hopefully going to keep them from doing, you know, making that decision, one way or another.
I just want to make sure I understood. So thank you for clarifying that because I got lost in the special ed piece. Okay, all right, let's do questions because I'm sure there's a million and a half more. Melissa, go first.
I have lots of questions. So was the virtual school first introduced because of COVID? Or has this been brewing from before?
Here in Falmouth?
Here in Falmouth.
Oh, just because of the the option just came out into us. So it was because of COVID.
Okay, so there's been no previous conversation prior to the COVID?
Absolutely not.
It wasn't allowed.
Well, but I don't, yeah, but in addition, I'm not sure that it would have been a conversation here. Yeah, right.
Okay.
You didn't even think about that.
Well, right, I don't think it was on anyone's radar to think about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, um, how, sorry, chicken scratch here. How much funding are we getting for school? And this question is for Patrick, I think. Patrick, please remind me how much we are getting per out-of-district student for school choice in? So like a matching student in.
Right, it's about five thousand dollars.
And then, I'm sorry, how much?
About five thousand dollars for for the children who are coming into the district.
And how much are we paying out for Falmouth students?
That, so school choice students. Now, and there's different definitions, school choice students, it's the same amount going out or going in. And we've done, relatively speaking, Falmouth has done very well relative to the other districts in the Cape in terms of recruiting, attracting school choice students into the district. And our net between income and outgoing students is is very positive. Where I think we're still second only to NOSIT in terms of the number of school choice students we have and net out. And we don't send buses out to other districts. But the cost to send, if if a family decides, I want to send a student to TECA, which is one of these virtual schools, the town would be charged eighty-eight hundred dollars in tuition. So it's more similar to like a tech school tuition or a charter school tuition. It's it's closer to that as opposed to the the school choice option.
Okay, and then school chose students would not be eligible for Falmouth Public Schools' virtual school, correct?
That's what I.
Correct. Okay, and on our, and this is my last question. On our survey, did we ask our families, if we don't provide virtual school, will they leave Falmouth Public Schools?
We did not.
We did not. Okay, thank you. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. One of the things that was bantered about was that students have been successful in the remote world. But I, this is Time Magazine, which you all know, I need to show you that. It's from April 12th, but I just wanted to see, it's called The Lost Year. And what they talk over and over again in these, in the, there's three articles that I recommend people look at. What they talk over and over again is about motivation that they feel when kids are out on their own, that there's a motivation that's that's really hard to inspire in them. And I talked to a parent a couple of days ago and we were talking about her kid going back to being in in person. And she said that was a thing that she found is that her kids at home were not motivated as much as being in a group. She said, picture having to tell the teacher face-to-face that you don't have your homework versus over the internet, it's easier. So the I, the idea of virtual schools, I think, continues this problem of motivating students. I talked to Falmouth High School teachers and they have said that they found kids really high-achieving kids, grades have fallen a lot over the course of this remote period. So I I don't know that we should be looking for more of this kind of teaching. I think our town has said to us, a lot of people who contributed to the tents that we have acquired as ways to bring kids back into being together. They, a lot of people have said that's what we want. So the ninety-four parents who said they would be interested in the virtual thing, I think we have, we should count up how many parents already put so much time and energy into making learning safe, okay, and overcoming the the fears of COVID. Who else was I going to say about it? I also think it's something that all the discussion we have, we didn't include any teachers in having been interviewed or any students having been interviewed in making this decision about offering a virtual school. I think you really ought to ask students, that's the bottom, bottom line. You know, how much or what what was lacking or what did you gain or whatever? Ask both positive and negative questions before you go down the path. So I think you're all getting the idea that I want to steer way away from any more screen education and more in-person education. And I think we jumped into technology with schoolology without asking teachers in the beginning. If you remember last May, I said, whenever you make these decisions, you got to include teachers and students will use it, and we didn't. And I think if we're gonna, which I hope you don't, that's me personally who doesn't believe in the virtual school concept. You ought to ask teachers and students about the benefits and and how successful they were or how unsuccessful they were before going forward on it. The last thing I would say was graduation for me was the culmination of my enthusiasm for not doing any more screen type of schools was when Jack Richardson was the senior class president. And he spent a lot of time talking about things that his classmates had done over the years. I will say, some people said he didn't talk about every single kid in the class, but it's nearly impossible to do that. He still gave all these anecdotes. And where are you going to get any anecdotes if you're not together with your your classmates? I just think that's that far outweighs, in my opinion, virtual schools. Okay, did I say enough?
Definitely. Do we, a few questions, say, I could go up a few questions here. Do we have a sense of how many students were enrolled in virtual school pre-COVID? Do we have any idea what that looked like? And maybe you didn't track that or we didn't track that, I'm not sure. But I'm curious to know.
Yeah.
The interest in this pre-pandemic, right? This is a very unusual year and I am challenged by the idea of looking at numbers based on coming out of a pandemic. That's sort of part one.
Yeah, Patrick, please.
Okay, do we know that, Patrick?
Yeah, Sharon Reed tracks all that stuff or has keeps track of it. And we did check it, there's five students at TECA. You know, previous, I'm not sure of the exact date, but.
Okay, great, so pre-COVID, we were looking at five students. So thank you, Patrick. And then, you know, we're looking, and I'm looking at the last page, the enrollment. So we're saying, you know, year one, one fifteen to one forty. And then we jump up to one hundred and fifty, you know, potential students the year is falling. So if enrollment's going down, I was curious to ask on that. Enrollment's going down, but, you know, potentially based on this sheet, enrollment in virtual would go up if we could sort of, that's a question. Anyway, I don't know, Patrick, is that, I'm not sure I understood the question. Sorry, I'm sorry.
The the concern or the debate here, and it's a, it's an interesting community debate, is, you know, is a discussion about whether or not a virtual, a Falmouth-branded virtual school will keep children enrolled in the Falmouth schools. Or will they, are they so enamored with the idea of a virtual school that they are going to find a virtual school and unenroll their their student in in Falmouth and go to TECA or Greenfield or there's a, I I'm sure there will be more if there aren't already.
Right, okay, thank you. And just for, so that you know what I was, my question. On the last page, it says, you know, for the twenty-two school year estimate, one fifteen to one forty. And then the next, one two three four, the next four years, the number jumps up to one fifty. So I was just curious.
They were just, it was, I understand what you're talking about. It was just an estimate we needed to, I mean, we have no data to support what it would be.
Right.
But I can't imagine that it would be ever more than that. And that's kind of what we're discussing.
Right.
But that was.
Great, and then I have three more questions I have to add to the time, statements.
We all have.
Yeah, so piggybacking on Terry, I think that it is vitally important that we receive feedback from all stakeholders and and teachers needs to be definitely part of this discussion. And I also, the timeline is 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 fast for, I think, a lot of people to really wrap their brains around. There are lots of questions here. And I'm hesitant for the, we're looking at about a million-dollar investment in this project and where else could that go? Because earlier we said we wouldn't use the ESR3 funds to, you know, sort of fill in some of the questions for next year, but then to invest it into this, you know, I I think that we need to really think about that. I thought you said you had turned it off.
That was it. I know, there's two states.
Okay.
I jumped to multichannel. Well, first of all, I think it's interesting, I mean, and I think the fact that Dusty came forward and offered this and we jumped on it, it's it's obviously been clear that this was successful for other districts as well as far as virtual learning for kids during COVID. I personally think it is a great additional option to have. Obviously, my kids didn't do so, virtual learning, however, many kids did. I think my concern would be, I know that you only offered that survey to those that were, that chose to stay remote for the rest of the rest of the year. I would be interested to have that survey blasted to everybody, to to all students to see if there would be any interest moving from being back in school to being remote, even though they're back in school now, if they would be interested in that virtual. I I think only coming up with ninety-four students out of all the virtual students currently, I think it's a really small number to to move forward with such a huge investment. So I would, I would like to see what that number would be. But other than that, I mean, I think it's great to be able to offer both because I do think some kids that that struggle in an in-school environment, it would be great to be able to offer them that opportunity. But for for ninety-four students out of the entire district, I think this is very, that's a very small number. And I'd like to see if maybe there would be more if you offered that survey out to everybody.
If I could respond to this real quickly. Now, I I appreciate that, that was a, it was a decision I made. It was an assumption, right? That if they were choosing in-person now, in-person would be their their option. The of the ninety-four, we're only out of the two hundred and seventy-seven. So there's still three hundred and some that still haven't responded that are choosing remote right now. And ever since we started the survey, from day one, when we had, you know, the first fifteen minutes, we had forty people respond, it was about thirty-five percent. And it has stayed thirty-five to thirty-nine percent the entire time. And so, you know, people that, you know, do surveys, you would assume that even if if that's the case over the like the first three hundred, right? Over the second half, that that number may continue. If that was true and we were actually doing enrollment, would we actually have more than the ninety-four to start with? I guess that's, you know, there's another assumption kind of in there, but I, we don't know that, right? And that's, we have to go with what we know. I don't know if that kind of makes sense as we kind of think through this or not.
Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Everybody's got it, Phil.
Like, you know, I want to piggyback on what you said, I had the same question system. It would be nice to know if they would plan on taking their kids back to a remote option anyway. And that that question wasn't on the survey, it was the one-question survey. Would you enroll one or more of your children for Falmouth Virtual School? That's it. There was, it had to be yes or no. There's not a maybe option. There were a lot of these parents, like you said, who who said yes in their answer because it was a binary choice. But then they had a lot of comments in there, you know, mainly only due to COVID. Or, you know, if the kids are allowed to come back, then I would like it back in the school. I would like my kid in the school, but my kid would like to return back to high school. So that's actually a yes and a no with the same answer. It would be nice to have the survey with more questions than just a one binary choice question about whether or not, and and asking specifically people who have chosen this option already, would you like it still, yes or no? I mean, it's, to me, it's it's like, if I like cookie to ice cream and all you had was chocolate all year long, you know, if you're not going to offer it next year, would you eat chocolate? Well, yeah, I would because I want something. But I think the answers need to be, I think we need a little bit more information. To me, I heard three things that we, that. To me, I heard three things that had kind of concerned me going into it very quickly, nearly thought through, and we have no data. And I think that's what's concerning me is we really don't have that good solid data. COVID was a crazy year. And, and I don't think that we can completely upset the apple cart based on what has happened over this past year. So I guess those would be my concerns moving into this. And I think as residents of Falmouth, supporting our schools, I think a lot of people would have a problem offering this option for folks who have their kids enrolled in, you know, hockey or dance or something else that they can't get to school during daytime. I don't know that that's necessarily the route we want to be going with our education. I think a better question to ask in survey is why? Why do you think your kid would do better at home with a virtual option than in the schools with our gifted teachers who are able to build relationships with their students? I mean, we heard teacher after teacher after teacher talk about relationships there and being available to their, their students to be able to just hop in and end up those relationships that are being built. This, to me, goes exactly to the opposite of that. And I think the better question is, why would you choose to keep your kid at home rather than sending them to the schools that we are, as a committee and a district, trying to make excellent? I think that's the better question we should be asking ourselves.
Leah and then Andrew. Oh, I'm sorry, I can hold back to you. Leah first.
Okay. Sorry, Bill. I, everyone's made really great points and great questions. So I've had a unique experience this year where I've been an administrator for a remote school within our school system. And I just want to address some of the concerns that both Bill and Terry brought up about engagement. And I have seen amazing teaching and learning in these classrooms. So they have been remarkable. And I don't think we have this exactly in Falmouth right now where people, where students are just with remote, where teachers are remote and students are remote. Do we have that right now? We do, where the whole class is remote?
Yep. I've gone through fourth grade.
Okay, okay, so it's similar to that model. And I just, I just want to say that today was a remarkable experience for me where I saw one fourth grader teaching another fourth grader how to make a comic on, online using an app. And the, the learning and the teaching and the engagement that was going on, and these were two students having this connection. It's something that you don't know unless you experience. So I just want to put that kind of personal perspective to this, that I've seen amazing learning and instruction going on remotely. So there are, for that reason, I really support a virtual school. What has been a very big challenge running this K through fourth grade program this year is that because our school systems are built on support for students and we think about all the needs of students. When we need guidance counselors, when we need tech support, when we needed special education teachers to come in and just give us some insight around things, it was very hard because those are additional resources that when we're talking about 10 teachers for this program, that doesn't include all these other resources that we would need. And that's, that's a lot of funding, and it's necessary to run a successful program. I also think we really would need an administrator for this program, which is also another cost to our system. So to Lisa's point, when we're looking at 94 students, but really, I don't, I don't think it's feasible to look at that kindergarten through second grade with this model. So we're taking out nine students there. This is a huge fiscal investment for our school district. And I think, you know, I think it wouldn't be, it wouldn't feel fiscally sound to me for us to put all this money into a very small group of students to think that we're taking away from a large group of students and staff. But I just want to say that I totally support remote education. I have seen amazing growth this year. And maybe there's a way to do this, but without considering all of those resources that are needed for a school to run successfully and being fiscally aware of that, I, I don't think we could do a program like this.
Did you want to answer? Because I thought those positions were built in when I looked at the application. There wasn't there an administrator?
Yeah, so coordinator, so a coordinator, not, not a principal, but a coordinator that would report to Dr. Tellier, so, in her office. So, and, you know, so yes, there would be someone overseeing the program.
But that would be beyond the, we were thinking $1 million, so we have 10 teachers.
Well, it's, it's not 10 teachers. It is, it's when Patrick used the number 10, it was actually including all staff. So the nursing support, the counselor support, the special education teacher, and then the teachers, because right now our numbers, it would be, you know, kind of doing that multi-age, you know, three, four, we'd have two at the five, six, and then the model would be different at the upper grades. So Patrick was all in on the 10.
Yeah, I was saying FTEs, yeah.
Yeah, FTEs, so it would, it's all of that.
And that's with all of the additional supports?
Yes.
Tech support?
Well, the tech support is from our technology group that covers the district. So, yes, I mean, they, they would be assigned to that school as well.
Yeah, because it does get more complicated with a remote school, the tech support piece. Because the, the teachers aren't in the schools, so it's harder to know when the issues arise. Physically, they will be. Physically, those teachers will be in schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we still want, we still want our teachers connected to our other teachers of that grade level. So for common planning, for, you know, just support, I mean, the net, you know. So yes, our teachers would physically be located in our schools. But they would be just doing the, the virtual. And not much different than we did this year, right? With our remote teachers.
Where would the space be for they to have their own classroom or?
Question, yeah. So right now, like this year, we had two, two teachers per, per class space. So yes, we do, we do, we actually have a class space.
Andrea and then Bill.
Yeah, so I'm going to try to, I usually try to have my thoughts together better, but I have this big mess that I'm writing here, and some things jump around. I think one of the unfortunate things about this discussion is that this timeline is Desi-driven, right? So their push, they, they came up with the idea fairly late, if you think about when these applications are due. And having a real robust discussion that involves the community, involves all the stakeholders, is hard to do on that. And then, you know, the, the discussions we've had to date were really, and maybe I had missed that, I was seeing this as a next year only, right? That we still have some people who didn't feel comfortable or were unable to come back into our schools. And then when reading through the application, I could see that there was this longer term piece to it and that there have been pieces of that, in particular, in the Tech for Learning group, that have been discussing a lot of these important issues around personalized learning and some of the blended learning that has already been happening in the district that is very successful. And so it seems like we're maybe kind of trying to push some things into these, into, into things that wouldn't necessarily be the way that we would want to do it. So some of these big ideas around virtual learning, but there is this opportunity and it's kind of, it seems to me trying to be squeezed into that. You know, many of the things that we think that we would ideally like to do around virtual learning or many of the benefits to our students about having these other types of opportunities, we're fitting that also into the current learning model with the same constraints that we have. And those constraints might not be what, what works for our students. Many of the reasons they might choose to go to a virtual school is to open up other opportunities for themselves. But if we're doing it, and I'm thinking about how remote learning was this year, it was very specific with time learning and when you had to be in front of your, your screen and the, the things that we were able to do. And I don't think that that's where any of us would want to go if we were saying we need to make this leap into virtual learning to address needs of other students. We wouldn't design it that way. We would start from scratch and think of it, you know, a little bit more outside the box. So I'm feeling very conflicted because I understand that there could be a lot of benefits. And I do think that we really need to make sure that we're thinking of, when we're trying to reach all students, you know, we're, we're talking about students who maybe didn't do well, but we have to acknowledge there are students who did even better. You know, some of the ones that weren't dressed, that, you know, we've had Dr. Parkinson on, you know, talking about who were unable to function properly with a lot of the, the stress and anxiety of being in the classroom that then suddenly flourished. Well, we have to look at that and say, we're now meeting those students' needs where we weren't before. And so we don't want to forget that. We can't just think of schooling as how it worked for us or anecdotally, you know, just the people that we associate with. But there can be many ways of learning, and that's what we're ideally trying to get to. I just wish that this conversation has had more time around it to really think that through. I think because we're talking about how to fund it, that, you know, we're looking at those ESSER dollars, but we already said that we want to have a big conversation around that with all the stakeholders. And so this would be one of those things in the mix. But because of the timeline with those two things, it seems like it's not possible to wait and put that into the mix. I looked at a lot of the information that was provided about the, the teachers that we had going through the Bridgewater program. And we have a lot of teachers who have so many skills in these areas now. But now I'm also wondering about alignment. Would they be the teachers that would necessarily be the ones to slot in? Or are they already doing other things in the, in the district? Do the, would the teachers want to be, you know, part of this virtual school? Is that sort of the trajectory they see themselves going into or not? And I also had questions about, you know, we were talking about this future of virtual schools. And I think about, well, would that be something then that every district would end up having over time, their own virtual school? Or is it better to create these environments just because of, if it's, you know, not, it's probably not going to be 90, just based on your data, I understand that. But if you have, you know, the smattering here and the smattering there at each of the different schools even on the Cape, is there something that we could leverage by bringing that all together? Or does every school district also have a virtual school in its repertoire, right? So, and I, I don't know what that, what that looks like. But these are a lot of the questions that came to my mind. I'm trying to see if there's anything else on my list here. So I do think that there's a lot of benefits and I want to meet all of our students' needs, but I just think there was a lot of questions still out there for me personally.
I don't know where to start. I don't even know if you can start at the beginning of this. But one of the things I did read was 96 families chose homeschool. They're our students, correct? Given the opportunity, how many of them would go virtual? Do we know that?
So I know in the survey, there were 19 of our homeschool families that said they would come back if we offered a virtual. Of the 277 that we had, right? So not all homeschool families answered.
Not only 96.
Right, they did not answer.
How many homeschool?
Oh, I mean, 96.
To me, 96 would add a heck of a lot more numbers to 194 or up to 150 or whatever. Because given that opportunity, homeschooling or virtual, I would think that virtual might balance that out really quickly. That's just, just a comment. But I think that needs to be looked into if you're going to get appropriate numbers. And because, to me, staffing's a concern because if I look at teacher teaching math, is he going to teach maybe two blocks of math? And then is he going to teach a virtual block of math? How do you schedule that? How do you do the curriculum balancing act? That, to me, is a concern. Special education, to me, is a concern. Obviously, we want to meet the needs of the students, but if we have students that have PT, OT, or some kind of reading difficulty, are we going to do that online virtually supporting? Or are we going to do a homeschool environment there where we actually visit them? Because it's an IP. To me, that's really critical because, to me, we have to meet the needs of the IP. The kid has to be successful with the IP. So do we go from virtual to, oh, we're going to visit you for a period of time to work on OT or PT? That's another concern. Obviously, funding is a concern because we talk about ESSER dollars and grant three. Is that a guarantee? Dollars for Falmouth School District? I think in, in doing a little bit of research, a little bit of reading, I think there were 13 or 14 school districts that looked at this virtual. Is that a guaranteed dollars for those 13 or 14 school districts? I don't know, that's kind of a question mark. The, the other thing is, if a kid's virtual, and again, again, kids homeschool, they can obviously come back for a band or orchestra or co-curriculars or sports or anything like that. I just want to make that, clarify that. And, and I get to the point where, one, a support system, whether it's guidance or whether we're asking them to, to do physical education on virtual, art virtual, music virtual, any kind of thing like that. Is that really appropriate? Do we have the teacher and the responsibilities to do those things? So I just kind of go round and round with this because I, I think virtual is here to stay. Colleges have been going online for years. We have kids that look at possibly dropping out of school and they actually go to an online school. We obviously did remote, that's kind of a virtual experience. So we have virtual, online learning, and remote. So I don't think virtual is going to go away. But how do we get to the point where we actually, as a school district, benefit all our kids' needs? Great question. The other thing is, if I, if I want to go virtual and I decide that Falmouth, even though maybe, say, Falmouth has a virtual program, and I go into the virtual program and it's apparent, I look at it and say, I really don't know if I want to do this. Can I then go to Teca? Can I then go to Greenfield? Because the virtual is offered in my school district. But if I don't like it or I don't think it meets my total needs, can I go to a program that maybe at least has, I hate to use the term more credibility, but at least more experience in the virtual world? So again, that's another question. I, I have notes all over the place. I, I don't think I can sit here and honestly make a decision this evening about yea or nay. But there's, I think, a lot more that needs to be put into this. I agree with teachers need to be involved, stakeholders need to be involved, more community input. I don't have any answers.
Can we address that? Yes, I can. So to answer your question, yes, families always have the choice to move to a, you know, the virtual school. So if they didn't like our school, I mean, be, whether they, you know, like an in-person school or a virtual school, they would always have that option. I'd like to turn it over to Sonya to, to talk about some of those other options. And then Joan has addressed the remote learning for the special education students. I think she can do it quickly again, just so, because this was really important discussions. And, and I just, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of this committee. You always are thoughtful and thinking through. And so, anyway, Sonya and then Joan, answer Phil's questions.
So with regard to some of the additional opportunities that you are outlining, those are some that we were looking through because we just looked at each of the students associated with grades nine through 12 to see what their course selection was and which of the elective. to see what their course selection was and which of the elective or special program opportunities, as well as which advanced placement courses they may be looking at, not only for their core courses, but in addition for elective opportunities or special interest opportunities. So that's one of the pieces that we're we're trying to understand. So equating it similar to, as you were explaining, the homeschool where if a student had an expressed interest in marching band, and marching band is accredited course, but it means outside of the school day, bring the student in to be able to join in that. The other key point in being able to access some of these opportunities that you pointed out, Mr. Ryder, is is that it's also coming out of the COVID world. So there are opportunities for students to be able to access other students, to be able to work collaboratively, to have places that they come together, whether it is on one of our school campuses and or a a place in the community where they can get together. One of the other pieces that we were looking at in the application was internship opportunities, which aligns with some opportunities that we already provide students. Because I think one of the pieces that came up too, when it was aligned to Andrew's comment, was about that variable of time and whether it has to be fixed to the the traditional start and end time, which is the direction that Desi was pointing us, or if they're able to allow us to realize the quality education and begin to provide experiences that allow some flexibility with how the student learning day is structured. And one of the options we can put in there would be an internship opportunity and having the career alignment as well for some of our students. There were a lot of opportunities that you listed in your your comment, and those were a few of the broader ones, I think, that impact the the range of students who have expressed interests. I've been looking into their schedules. But if there's a specific or a couple of specific ones that you want to point me to, I'd be happy to share some additional information as I have it.
I don't know where to start.
Laura, did you pick up on any particular questions that you thought Sonya might want to address?
I guess that the experience for the the, I wanted to talk a little bit, we we did learn a lot this year, right? And we do have teachers that are very interested in teaching us that's within our district. We we did talk with with teachers. I guess, though, I was picking up on, you know, you know, how do we deliver those services, right? And that's the Joan piece that I was really, you know, wanted to focus on that as well. Because our our staff became quite proficient this year in being able to deliver those services. But Joan and I don't know if Sonya, if you wanted to add anything more, but.
Certainly, and thank you for those very thoughtful questions. I think there's a uniqueness to special education. So certainly, some of the counseling, we, you know, we recognize that telehealth services are very much part of, are here and now. And to Mr. Ryder's point, I think that there's some level of that across multiple domains in which that may be here to stay. So there are options through that. Again, the level of special education instruction, depending on the needs of the student, can be very much supported through a virtual environment. You did mention OT, PT, and speech about potentially going into the homes. I wouldn't see that as a means from from a homeschool perspective, as a means of delivering those services. What we would need to do is certainly based off of if if we were to move forward with a virtual school, we would identify who has special education needs and we would take a look at the individual education plans of those students and kind of move forward with that from a staffing and a service delivery model. Because you're very right, there there are some services that can be done or some service delivery that can be done very effectively through the virtual environment. And then there's other services that are certainly going to be best met through a more of a hands-eye approach. So I don't know that that answers that, other than that that does require, you know, a a bigger look into the students that may select virtual learning. But it would be similar to, as you pointed out, to, you know, Teca when some of our students leave here. The online Teca, Greenfield, they are, they're, they are a standalone district. So if there is a child with an individualized education plan that requires special education service delivery, those virtual programs are obligated to provide those services as well. But I'm I'm happy to try and answer more specific questions if any of the committee members have them or if Dr. Dewar, if there's something more specific you'd like me to try.
Thank you, covered. Thank you.
Okay.
So I want to share my thoughts before we, I saw a couple of hands come up from people who have already spoken, but I just want to share a couple of my thoughts about it. I agree with Bill that I don't think this is going away. I think that people have no idea that their kids could learn in a virtual world until this year. And I think we don't provide a virtual school, someone else is going to. And that doesn't change the fact that I think that it's better for most kids to be in person at school. But I also recognize that it is not my responsibility to tell or my place to tell families how to educate their kids or what setting. So it is a very small number of our families, you know, 94 or 100 kids. But that's 100 kids who are telling us that they need something. And I have a very hard time telling them that we're not going to do it. So I want to come back to something that Andrea mentioned that you said, when you thought about it, you thought of it as a one-year thing. And I do think of it that way. Because like Bill pointed out, we don't have a lot of data to go by. We have a year of complete and utter chaos where kids have no connections to anyone outside of school. And we're suffering in completely different ways. So to me, this is, this is like a bridge, you know, it's, it would be an opportunity to bridge COVID with normal for the 100 kids that their families really think that that's what they need. And then then go back and say, okay, now, now what? Is this something we really want to do? And having ESSER money to be able to pay for it is bonus rather than going all in, a million dollars on a project that you might dump after a year. So those are my thoughts, but I have questions. So my, I can't read them. My first question was about, oh, about the timeline. So if we, if we apply to the next phase, are we then obligated to offer the school? Okay, so we could potentially fail. And if we, if we decide, and I'm also wondering about the funding piece because the timing doesn't all line up. So if we were to apply and then hold the our community discussions about all the ways we want to spend our money and then on the rest of the thing, it's like, God, no, this is not what we want to spend it on. We come up with some other brilliant way, spend that million dollars, then then we can quit and just say, like, never mind, this isn't what the community is telling us they want. Is that true? Or is there going to be a point where we've gone so far that we can't? So do you know what I mean? Yeah, I I do hear you. I I I don't think the two are going to align. And and here's why. I mean, our our application is due back on July 6. If there's a lot of planning that still needs to happen, right? I mean, planning to be outpatient and getting approvals, one thing. But we still have a lot of staffing to hire. We still have to do, to Bill's point, like, we need more in-depth. And this was a quick survey, just to see, should we even move on to the second phase? Right? I mean, if I, if we, we have no interest, then I wasn't going to spend a lot of time continuing to do this, you know. So we really have a lot of, you know, questions we have to talk to our families about. We have, we have a true enrollment process because that's the real commitment, right? A survey is one thing, but we need to know a true commitment we're going to do. And then we do have these staffing, you know, like, we've got to figure this out. And our schools then have to figure out schedules. And then we, you know, it's just, I don't know if we would have that time.
Okay.
I mean, even though I plan on gathering that information over the summer, I don't know if we could wait
Right.
until throughout the summer that I'm that I'm doing that, right? Because school, school's going to start up at the end, you know, in September. But I'm saying, like, I I I don't see that aligning.
Okay.
I really don't. And I know this is a quick decision. I don't like that we're under this, you know, timeline. It was this, it's this feeling of, you know, wanting to meet the needs of our, all of our kids that even put us in this exploratory stage, right? And talking through it.
Yeah.
And again, I can count on those committees to be very thoughtful. I appreciate that. That's fair. I just wanted to have a sense for what, how, how far down the road do we, do we go? And you mentioned the commitment thing, and that was my, I think, my only other question that didn't get answered or didn't come up was, is it a full year? Like, if somebody enrolls in the virtual school, is, are they committing to being in the virtual school all year? Okay, they could obviously be, but go to a different virtual school or go back to, I don't move or whatever. But but they would be committed. So it's not like they would be then potentially moving from that into. I mean, we can discuss that, obviously, that's, you know, but we can't have this movement that we had this year.
Right.
That was, that was very hard on our teachers. With, you know, students coming and going, changing their mind. And I feel like, you know, if this is what you're asking for, then it should be a commitment. Because we're also putting those resources to them. I imagine it would be for most of those families that they're committed, they committed all year. Yeah. I was just curious how it would work.
Would we have the right to tell them no if they decided to go back into in-person learning?
It's a very good question. I I I, you know, you know, this is all been to us, right? I mean, when we have a student that's committed to.
Okay, I can't, I can't hear. John, hold on. Can't hear each other.
Yeah, I know. No, I I mean, I'm not sure, like, right? We would have to really get, I think, you know, get legal advice on that only because, like, when we have a student commit to, you know, North Falmouth Elementary, right? They don't move in the middle of the year to another school unless there's a hardship and they, you know, ask us to do that, which happens very rarely. Like, they're committed to whatever school, even our school choice or even, you know, there are, there are families from different communities that we actually allow to go to different schools within our, our. We would have to have some things in place because I, we just couldn't have kids coming along. I mean, that would just be way too difficult to do that. I don't know. It is a good point. If they chose that they want us to come back in person, I I I don't know that we can say, no, we're public school, right? I I don't know. It's a good, it's a very good question.
Melissa, I thought I saw your hand.
Yes, so my first time I spoke, I really just had questions. And now I just wanted to give some of my opinion, like.
Sure.
We all went up and done. So I I've heard a couple of things. Dr. Door, when you were mentioning that teachers would be in the building so they could connect with teachers. So I've always said that it's our job as, well, not an educator, but it to help our students, you know, grow into responsible adults. So I would think that fostering that same sort of like in-person connection and support and relying. And sometimes you just need to like check in with somebody and face-to-face, you know, and have somebody there. So there's that thought of mine. I've also heard tonight a lot about relationships. And I really think that we need to speak with a lot of the stakeholders. And I truly feel like we're on somebody else's timeline. I don't like that. I I don't, that doesn't make me feel good. I'm always the first to ask, what can we do to make it more Falmouth? And it feels like we can't on this situation. Physical and occupational therapy. I've been a nurse a long time, and I I cannot fathom how you could possibly provide those two therapies virtually. I'm sure that provisions were made this year. But when I think of a physical therapist, I think of putting your hands on another person and showing them correct body mechanics. Same thing with occupational therapy. And I don't want to leave speech out of it as well, although I feel like that might be the only that you could do virtually. But again, I come from a different mindset. And even that's a bit of a stretch for me when I think of speech language. So I I heard Bill say that the virtual is not going to go away, to which I thought maybe we could use what we've learned, learning virtually, as a tool in the classroom. So I know that we've talked about this before. Have an opportunity for snow days so that we can be virtual. What if you had a child that couldn't go to school for health reasons? And I don't mean like fever and like, I can't get my head out of bed. I mean, like, I've got a broken leg in three spots and I can't, you know, I have to stay at that. Maybe we use Zoom as a tool in concert with our inpatient, sorry, right? In-person classroom. I've also heard that we'd have to hire staffing. We're struggling with our staffing now, like that. We're, we're, we're hearing from families and teachers that are so afraid that they're going to lose music and art. And now we're talking about hiring other teachers. I feel like that's kind of not, I I I don't, I don't appreciate that for our existing staff and teachers and work families. And teachers have already mentioned that that is a giant concern. And again, I just want to circle back on, it just really feels rushed. And I am very much into people and connecting with them and looking them in the face and giving students an opportunity to see people in person, connecting with them. You know, Mrs. Hart, who teaches music, I know she's always going to be in her classroom. You can't always get that virtually. I saw it with my own kids when they would try to send a message. Their teacher didn't always answer them because they were doing their job otherwise. So and they did a beautiful job. I don't, that's not anything other than a praise to them. So I just, I'm very uncomfortable with this. I don't get, it feels very rushed. It feels very not Falmouth. And then I I don't know what to say about the 100 students, the less than 100 students. I I really don't. But this is a lot of money and it's very rushed. And we're coming up the craziest year we've ever had ever. Those are my thoughts.
Anyway. Let's just go down the line. Quick question, then a comment. You're saying it's due back July 6. What is actually due back? Our final application. Our final application.
We have to have a school committee vote and then address all the the comments.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And I think one thing that I I really wanted to to comment on is, I wanted to thank you for thinking of the kids because Desi made this offer. You jumped on an opportunity so that all of our kids can have whatever works best for them. And whether this works or it doesn't work, and I just want to thank you for, you know, thinking of the other kids that perhaps might benefit from it and exploring the opportunity. And it may or may not come to fruition, but at least that's something that you threw out to the rest of us and to the, to the community as something that you could do for the kids. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I wanted to say, I sounded reactionary like an old lady. But it's a strong feeling and it's, and it's rightfully so. But we, for years, I don't know how many years, maybe Sunday, Sonya knows this. I mean, we've talked about blended learning. I mean, to me, why can't we become the gurus of blended learning? Where we have, that we push that. Because I bet a lot of people are homeschooled. I'm guessing it's about curriculum. It's not about socializing the majority of them, I'm guessing. It's like, those are things that we need to know to make a decision. But I think if we, I mean, if we offer more possibilities to expand without having to exit our building, but, you know, that's the only way you can expand. That's the only way you can expand your horizons. Uh, I, I don't like that. Okay. Anyway, blended learning, that's what I think. Okay, Andrea.
Um, so I guess I wanted to, um, that we've gone sort of back and forth and I think we were sort of. Addressing this, Kelly, with this idea of what we need for next year. And then what we might want to do long term. So I guess I was trying to think through the pros and cons of. You know, if this was something that we were thinking we might want to try, we probably pilot it, like we do a lot of other things. And test it out and get the extra data that we need to be able to make the long-term decision. So I guess, I'm wondering, is that a possibility based on how this is set up from Desi? Um, will this ever be offered again if we don't take advantage of it now? Um, and then another question I had is, what does happen to the students if we decide not to do this? Um, and I think there, there are a lot, like I said, there are a lot of pros and cons with all of this because. Even just piloting it, we're gonna have to put a lot of resources in them, into it, but we do have, potentially have those resources with the extra dollars. And to think of, well, what happens if we run that whole experiment and it doesn't work out? And we go back to, you know, life as normal. But it may have bridged people in a year. That was critical just because there are still enough unknowns that, you know, not everybody. Necessarily be able to, um, jump back into learning as it, as it was. And that's different from the philosophical piece of, could this be the potential way of learning? For some students for the, the longer haul. So I can say that again. Do you think that there's any opportunity that it could be a pilot or that it would ever be offered again? To expand it? Or is this like a one-size-fits-all from Desi right now?
I don't know. I mean, I, I mean, it's a very good question. Will this, um, the, will this opportunity be open to districts? From now on, right? Because a lot of things have changed. So will Desi always allow districts now to have that opportunity? Uh, I think there's probably a good chance that that could be right. They're opening the door. Um, they'd already opened the door for, um. You know, the two other schools that were actually kind of statewide, right? Anybody could apply. This is now, um, an opportunity for districts that are just for. Individual districts. Um, so my guess is it's, it might be open, um, from now. Um, to answer your question about a pilot, I don't know that they would allow us to call that, but. I mean, it, it could be like our commitment for a year to see if that can happen. I, I do know that we can stop it. So, I mean, that's.
Did the application require those many years out like you had?
They did in the planning process, but, but one of the things I did ask, um, I had, I talked to them. If we evaluate the program at the end of the year and we do not think that this is, um. Is as successful as we want it to be, are we committed to moving forward? And the answer's no. So I, so I did ask that.
Pilot to me.
But then you'll answer your question. I'm sorry, gonna.
No, you were answering.
No, I mean, what, what happens to the, these ninety-nine kids, right? My, if I had to guess, and I, of course I don't know, right? My guess is that it will be a mix, right? There, there, um, some of our families are gonna be. Clippers through and through. They're not gonna go anywhere, so they're just gonna come back in, right? That's just what it's gonna be, because I'm gonna stay in Falmouth and I wanna be a Clipper. And, um, but then there's gonna be some of these families that, you know, they really like this option and they're probably gonna go to TECAD, right? Do I think that all ninety-nine are gonna go there? I, I don't. I, I think, think, you know, we'll, we'll lose some and some will stay. I mean, I. Yes, and, and maybe the homeschool, those nineteen may remain in homeschool or you might get a few others, right? Right. I mean, there's, there's a lot of options that, that families, and they'll find that if we don't do this, they'll find an option that beats me.
Does TECAD have capacities? The, the two that exist, are they infinitely expandable?
No, they're not. And this is interesting. I found out by, um. It, we're having these conversations, right, with them. And so the conversation, there are, um. Students that even prior to this year, that have been sitting on the waiting list. Um, that have not gotten in, but they also aren't, aren't engaging with us, right? So it's just like there's this lost educational month. Or, you know, even a year that they are not coming in. They're not doing anything. It's very hard for us to do anything about that. And this is pre-COVID, right? But they're on that TECAD waiting list. I don't know if it's more prevalent at certain ages. What, what we, what I've learned is that we've had students in our district that that's happened to.
Because what Desi's saying, there's a hard stop to virtual, um, you know, hybrid, then, um. You know, s- s- we have a hundred odd students here. When you start multiplying that by districts, I'm sure we're not an anomaly. And now that there is hard stopping put in, there's gonna be a handful of districts that may try to do what we're talking about here. What's gonna happen? Wh- what's the, where's the capacity for all these students, right? Like, if, if we have two, you know. Statewide virtual schools, they just are not gonna have a capacity. So TECAD's for, for profit?
I believe so. Patrick, do you happen to know if the, if Greenfield and TECAD are for profit?
I think one is for profit and one isn't, is my understanding. And it don't, I don't have which one is, which one isn't.
It's Greenfield, just.
But usually what happens is like Desi will offer like RFPs and so they can put it out for more. Company or more organizations to put in, like this is a need for the state. And then maybe there'll be other companies. I assume that some have been born through this year.
And who knows? I mean, there's certainly not gonna be as good as our teachers.
Right. This is, yes, this is a very different.
What are we supposed to do? Okay, so that's what I was gonna get to. So, um, so, you know, we can't act if we don't have act on it. So, you know, clearly we had a lot of ground to cover. So. Here's my question. Um. Who feels like they need additional information in order to actually make a decision? Okay, um. Do you want to hear what that is? Because what I'm trying to get a sense for is, like, if we're just gonna vote it down, we should just vote it down. But if, if people really need more, um, in order to make a decision on what to do. Then we should get that information and we should take it up at our next meeting. But I wouldn't want for all this stuff to, you know, all these resources to be poured into trying to. Figure out all the answers and all this stuff if we're, and if we all know that we're just voting down. You know what I mean?
It seems like we're not gonna be able to make the timeline that by the time we try to reach out to get all the information, whether it's surveying more families. Surveying more families or whatever we're trying to gather to make that July sixth deadline.
I mean, that's. It would have to all be done before we meet.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, like.
That's a pretty big hurdle.
But clearly you think that it's a doable hurdle.
Well, it depends what your request.
Okay, so let's find out what the additional information is and then we can go from there. But you, you, you see what I'm getting at, right? Like, we don't wanna just. Ask admin to collect eight million things for us and, but we all really know we're just gonna hold up. So, um, Leah, what are you looking?
So actually, um, Melissa's question about, was there a question on the survey that said if this isn't available? Melissa, I'm so tired. Can you?
Back to my chicken scratch, um, let's see.
If this isn't available, will you come back in person?
Oh, yes, it was on my first one.
Did the survey ask if we didn't provide virtual school, will they leave?
Yeah, I just think that that's really helpful, along with that question of why, um, that Bill was referring to.
That would form many things.
And surveying more. Like, if we could put it out to everyone, I, I just think we might. If we had three hundred families who said, you know, yes, this is really what I want, like we went back into school. Because that was really our only option right now, um. Remote for our older students, if they weren't part of those remote classes, looked very different. You know, they were zooming in. To live classes, which is, is very different than when you have a full remote class. So maybe they liked that experience but don't like, you know.
Right. Okay. What do you need?
Um, so I think partially I need a little time to process.
Sure.
Right, because this is getting a lot of this information. I want to make a, an informed decision. But specifically, um, one of the things that was asked for in that feedback. Um, from Desi was about sort of around the mission and goals. And I think, you know, that's something they want to clarify anyway. And so if we can really formulate that, um. That would be important. And then I guess I'm also. One of the things I'm processing is, you know, we've gone through staffing and funding and some of those pieces that all. Sound doable, but I'm also concerned about the amount of effort that it will take to get this up and running. While we have other immediate needs. And maybe it's the fact that we're going out of COVID and everybody has been doing superhuman things. The entire time and not having that in place will free up all this extra space to be able to take something like this on. But, um, when, when we, it is, it's just hard when we're trying to meet the needs of all students. And we, we see this recognized needs, but we also have seen other needs. And I just don't want to spread ourselves too thin and not do anything well. And I don't know if that's a specific thing, like how do you get me that information, but that's part of what I want to process.
Okay, fair enough. Bill, did you need more of something? Give a. A piece that would help you make a decision?
I think the expansion of the survey would be better, are good, more input. One of the things I, I keep coming back to is, it's one that's not going away. To invent the experience of hybrid. Now we're taking the hybrid. Out of, kids are coming back to school in person, or there's a potential in virtual program. I don't think that's, it's that complicated to put together. I think staffing, scheduling is, is a real concern. The other question I would have is. If we decided tonight that, yes, we want to move forward. But in another month, month and a half, we feel that this just isn't gonna work. Can we put a stoppage to it? Or if we say, yes, we're gonna go as a school committee, are we all that'll jacket and go?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a, there's a tipping point, right? Because of the hiring and the staffing. Right? It's, it's, it's easier to pull the plug if we don't, you know, if families aren't actually committing and enrolling and that, that, but there's. Um, you know, which we would have to, but, but it's the hiring of the staff that, um. I mean, to, to the point, this is, this is very late for, for us to do this on this timeline. And count on that, uh, we're gonna have even hiring to the summer, that we're gonna have high-quality staff. And that's a concern. It absolutely is. I, I'm hoping right now, if we were moving forward, that, you know, some of our high-quality teachers that were in those one-year temporaries would. Have not found yet a job yet, would love to stay here and help, right? Um, it's further you go out, I mean, the, I mean, I mean, just, you know, I mean, it's just reality, right? Further we go out to make this decision, then, um, the further, you know, I mean, more opportunity, I guess, that we're not gonna have.
Let me, let me just ask this question. My first meeting and maybe I'm just not sure how the procedures work, but would it be. Reasonable? Or even feasible to make a motion? To ask Dr. Dore and her staff to continue researching this? Without committing to doing it? Uh, would it be reasonable to make a motion for something along those lines tonight? With the possibility that the result of that vote may tell us whether or not it's even necessary?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's what.
I, I think we, if it's possible that we may already know the outcome. If, with that motion, that would still open up, at least depending on the outcome of the vote, still open up the opportunity. Again, depending on the vote, of continuing to look for the additional information that some folks are looking for, but if, if. There's a majority that isn't even in favor of that, then I think we have our answer.
Yeah, and that's basically what we're sort of pulling right now. Like, what are the remaining things that we need to be looking to?
So. Is that we can't make a motion, right? Because we can't act on anything.
No, we can't. We wouldn't be able to act on, because it has to say act on, uh. What does it say? Act on virtual school, which can't actually, we don't want to act on it because that would be implementing it. Um, and we can't act on anything that's not on our agenda.
Act on it means take a vote. It doesn't mean approve it.
But, but acting on continuing to research the virtual school would still fly, wouldn't it?
But we only need us to act on it for the application. So they can keep discussing. We don't need to authorize them to.
No, but what he's saying is that, that we, if, if five people voted down and say, if you don't even want the superintendent to spend any more time on this, then. We would know, which is a sort of what I'm get, I'm trying to get a little bit of, without having to take a vote, because we can't take a vote. You know what I mean?
What do you mean we can't take a vote? It says act means act. So voting is acting. That's often what we say instead of vote is act.
Yeah, I know, but the.
Oh, no, you have to vote on it, but we can vote on it if it says act.
I think you can act on this presentation of the virtual school.
Yeah, oh, that's a little bit of liberty, but I think we could probably do that. Okay, um, let's finish with what everybody else needs so that we at least know what people's final questions were. We made it almost all the way around. Do you have anything? Good. Do you have anything? No, my biggest hiccup is the timeline. Yeah, okay. Okay, so, um. Okay, I think we can get away with it. I, I just want to be really careful that we don't take any liberty with open meaning. Um, but because it only says virtual school, it doesn't say approve the plan to apply for virtual school. I think we're okay. Um, would you like to make your motion? Or do you want me to make a motion? Okay, so, um, I'll make a motion, um, that the school committee. Direct Dr. Dore and her team to investigate the remaining questions on implementing a virtual school. Is there a second? A second? Lisa, um, and if, any last questions or comments? And we are all present, so it is just a roll of all vote. All in favor of directing the superintendent to work further on this, say aye.
Aye.
And I can't tell what people said and I'm pretty sure it was split, so can you just do a hand so I can see if you were in favor of pursuing it? One, two, three, four, five. So the motion carries. Um, oh, all in favor? Right, all of us, I'm sorry, all opposed. I want to make sure that we don't have any extension, any extension. Okay, so the motion carries to move forward with gathering additional information, which means. Um, we'll get information about this, uh, an additional survey and the results of that. Um, how much time is and effort are gonna go in to this? So I think that's just sort of you observing your team on that. The mission and goals piece that Andrea mentioned. And I wrote timed them and I don't know what that means. Does anybody remember what's timed? Say again?
We need more of it.
Oh, we need more of it. Yeah. Um, okay, well, we can't really do that.
Can I just add to that survey, though? Um, Terry brought up really good points around students, um. And staff being involved in it. And it would be, I do think that since you're, you're surveying families who, you know. Are part of the remote, it would be great to get the student feedback about why it is that they want to stay. In a virtual school too. And I'm not sure what that would look like. Um, and I can't even like process it right now because it's so late, but. Something where we could get.
I'm not saying that we can't do this. I mean, in most certainly, we touched, we are two weeks away from our next meeting. I, I just want to put some reality to this, you know, I mean. Um, so we have to create the survey, get the survey out, the entire group, and get the survey back. And they all has it presented to me on the twenty-second.
Of our families responding.
Yeah, right. And we've always had to extend.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Two people at one time. Okay.
I just wanted to add that, like, in that survey, I think it's so important to explain this process that, like, just because. You know, however you can be explicit about why you're putting this survey out and how critical. you know, however you can be explicit about why you're putting this survey out and how critical it is for people to answer it would be great. Because people aren't going to know that this is like such a critical survey right now for deciding how we move forward with virtual learning for next year. And it, it will impact how we move forward.
I think to Lori's point, this is so, this would be so much work for you to do. And to try to get the survey together, get it out to the families, collect all the information, and pull it all together for us is, I just think it's too much. And I think that there's other things that we've got going on that we could be focusing on. And I absolutely think that should just be tabled. And if Desi allows us to do it in the future, then great. But I, I just don't think that the the opportunity is here right now. And as much as I think it's great, and I'd love to be able to offer, I just think it's, the timeline's way too short.
Yeah, it's a heavy one.
It's a heavy load.
Yeah.
It's just too much.
Are you changing your vote?
I am. I'm changing my vote. Like, I just, I think it's, I think it's unfair to ask Lori and the administration to dive through hoops and to try to gather all this information, which will probably fall short, no fault of their own. But, you know, we all know that it's going to take families a while to respond, and then they have to send out another notification. We're just not going to be able to gather all that information in, in a timeline that it's just, I think it's just too much.
So what does this mean with process? Do we have to re-vote now?
I, oh my God, I, we've never had that happen. I honestly do not
Sorry, I went for a little wrench in there, but I just
I don't
I have a lot of
I don't, I don't even think, I mean, really, do we really need to? We know what's going to happen.
Well, well, just it's the, I mean, this turns it
Right, it definitely turns it. And so the motion fails.
We should have an official vote.
Okay, we can do it again.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Reconsideration or something?
Sure, say that.
Maybe you have to do that.
Say that you'd like to reconsider. I would like to make a motion to reconsider the last vote and re-vote.
All right, I call the chair and we reconsider the last vote. So all in favor of, I make a motion that the school committee direct Dr. Dorr and her team to pursue further information on the virtual, implementation of virtual schools. Or a second? A second. And Leah's got the second on that one. Last discussion. Now we are caught all this. All in favor of directing Dr. Dorr to pursue this?
Aye.
Aye. For, oh wait, did you change? Okay, for, so all and all opposed?
Aye.
And no abstention, so the motion fails. So Dr. Dorr and the team will not pursue virtual school, at least not this year.
Is that the same as voting it down?
Yes.
The motion, I'm just trying to be clear.
It wasn't, there were too many negatives in it, but yes.
No, I know. I, I'm not, I'm just trying to clarify, right? Because you're voting for us not to pursue. But that doesn't say that you can't vote on the current, we could, I mean, I mean, the current information. You see what I'm saying? Like, I'm not sure. It, it's fine. I, I, I did it. We're not moving forward. And, and I do appreciate what you said, Lisa, because it was going to be a heavy load for two weeks. I, I, I just, I'm not even sure how we pull off. We're also ending school, right?
It's just too much.
So
But so, but I, so the next step in the process from Desi would be that the entire plan would come before us and we would have to make a positive, we would have to have a positive vote for that. We're just not even ever going to get to that point.
Okay.
Okay, we just won't do that now, which would mean that we can't proceed with Desi.
Okay.
We don't need to do it. Although we did it last night.
We voted for that in your
Yeah, no, that was, um, okay. That was a great discussion. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next thing. Yeah, my computer is telling me so it's about to go down. So next is to add on the memorandum of agreement between the family secretaries and the family school committee. This is our third meeting in a row with a union contract to approve. And we've already reviewed it in executive session, so I will make a motion that we act on the memorandum of agreement between the family secretaries and the family school. Second.
A second.
Let's skip that second. Any last comments on this one? All in favor to approve?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous that the motion passes. Thank you so much. And next is a first read on Wampanoag land acknowledgement. So Andrew, you have a really quick interview to read it, because we're going to move things along.
But I just want to give you a little background to know the process and the general discussion that we got to this point. So Natalie, Terry, and myself met with the members of the Mashpee-Wampanoag Education Staff, and that was the tribe's reindeer, Faith Hendricks, Lynn Jenkins, and Jerry Lassus, who we've met virtually. So at our first meeting of the full group, we discussed the general outlines of creating a land acknowledgement and how it should go beyond just focusing on the land and the past. We are encouraged to think of this as a mission statement for a partnership with the tribe, which may be different from some other land acknowledgements that you may have seen. We also discussed language, what language to use, and read that being very clear and honest is important. So after that initial meeting, our family team, just the three of us, collected a wide range of land acknowledgements that we've come across, that people have sent to us, that have been shared. We also looked for additional guidance from the Native Governance Center. And in particular, we found a piece of advice that we used to reflect on as we drafted our version. And that was, they said to ask yourself, how am I leaving indigenous people in a stronger, more empowered place because of this land acknowledgement? And I thought that was good to keep coming back to that, to make sure we're putting the emphasis where it belongs. So our team developed a draft where we wanted to not only address the past, but the present and the future. We had very robust discussions and carefully considered the language as we were developing the text. We took that draft then to the full group to discuss, you know, just how it looked. And overall, the feedback was very positive. We did make some changes to that to clarify the differences between some specific things, like what is, what is the Wampanoag Nation? What is the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe? You'll see some of the names of villages, of fount and some of the people who would have lived in this area. And making those distinctions are very important, and they helped us through that. And also trying to use this as an educational piece in and of itself. So not just an acknowledgement, but also every time it's read or it's viewed, people can, can learn something from it. You'll also notice that at the very beginning, you see two versions where we, we say fount of public schools, and also we can say it as the fount of school committee. And we put those there, not that they would exist together, but that they might be used in different situations. So there might be a poster in a school that would read one way. There might be something that we would put on our agenda or something that we would read before the school committee meeting, and we would say it a different way. That's why that's there. It would be actual different versions. So I think I'll leave it at that as the quick summary.
And Terry, you wanted to add something?
Yes, I wanted to say that when you read through this, please don't wordsmith. Because, look, if you look at the word unseated, which is a couple of lines in, for example, we, 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 as Andrea said, we referenced other land acknowledgements throughout the country. Some said stolen from, you know, some were much stronger, some weren't strong enough. So, and we, as Andrea said, we, everything did, we bounced off, and they bounced off of the Wampanoag Education Committee, so. And like, if it says nation, they wanted nation and not people, for example. I mean, I think we had people and said, so as you're reading through it, please think about the velocity of it, but the wordsmithing, we really worked very hard with them.
Great. And so I'll just read it very quickly for anyone who's still awake. Fount of Public Schools acknowledges that we are gathered on the unseated ancestral land of the Wampanoag, Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Sakaneset, Wopoi, Zippuviset, Chatakit, and Chapapoi, as original stewards of what is now known as the Town of Palat, and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people. In alignment of the core values of the Fount of Public Schools, we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoag Nation. Thank you. And as you saw, it's a first read, which means it's coming back. Any initial quick thoughts for the committee to take up?
I just have a quick question. Is this land acknowledgement, when Andrea, you mentioned the poster might read differently at school or statement might read differently, are these statements to be read before every meeting, PTO meeting, school committee meeting, class, school assembly? Like, what are we, what are we looking at?
We don't know what we're going to do with it yet. But this is what it would be. They, Mashpee has it posted around their buildings. Doesn't mean we have to do that.
Okay, so I think that's a good point that maybe the committee can take up and talk about how we use this.
So that was my question originally when this first came to us. I just want to be purposeful about it. I, I love this. I love, you know, educating the folks of the town, not just the students, but like the, hopefully this will open a door to questions. Like, now I'm sitting here wondering, gosh, was there a tribe out on Javi Island? And like, how did that, like, how did they, like, I, now I'm like, you know, my mind is going and I have lots of questions and I I'm certain that this will encourage other questions, but I really want to be purposeful about it. And I really, I don't want this to be something that it's not intended. So
Yeah, so, well, I think that that is to be determined. But I think they were very clear. And in our full group discussion, we discussed the fact that this isn't something that you just create a statement to check it off a list and it becomes a poster, and it's just, we have it up in the school. They really encouraged us to think of it almost a little bit more like a mission statement. So we're crafting something. And that's where you see we acknowledge the land from the past. We, we want to do things here, but we're also looking for the future. That's that mission statement part of it, where we're building a relationship with the tribe to have all sorts of other activities that will flow out of that. And they really wanted it to be something that's living like that as opposed to just a document.
Great. Thank you. So the committee can talk about that part. And then the thing that I'm wondering about is whether or not you and the tribe could talk about having a version of the land acknowledgement that has a much, much lower literacy level. So I'm thinking, like, in our elementary schools, it would be nice to have something that kids could actually understand it. Super thought. That's my only thought. Thank you so much for working so hard on it. And thank you to the tribe for being willing to and the community. Although we are thinking it'd be great to write them that. Oh, yeah. Any last thoughts on that? So next up on the agenda is approving our meeting schedule, because the election, I don't know why it happened this way, but we only have one more meeting scheduled at this point. So approving our meeting schedule for the whole next year, so that, especially for the summer, people can play up. So going back to last year, we met a lot in the summer because COVID. But going back to our tradition of having one meeting at the line in August, and you can probably remember, it was probably here, although we've left the meeting location blank to figure all of that stuff out. And then it just follows our traditional schedule, avoiding holidays and meeting the Mondays of town. Any thoughts on this kind of retreat?
Right. And we will have our retreat date scheduled, but since it's not an actual, no, it's not a real meeting. We don't do any business on it. We still have to set that, that date. Melissa, are we going to say something?
Just something snarky that one of the dates are on my birthday.
Mine too. Yep. I know, I thought about complaining. It's here. Okay, is there a motion to approve the school committee calendar, meeting calendar for next year? I make a motion to approve this school committee calendar for 2022. Natalie, Lisa's got the second. Any comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed? Any abstentions? Next, oh, next on the calendar is reorganization of the school committee. So I will hand the gavel to Dr. Dorr, who will lead the way for starting our nomination.
All right, so I am opening nominations for chair of the school committee for the 20, 20? 21? 22, sorry, 2021, 22 school year.
I would like to make a nomination. I had the pleasure of working with Natalie this year as vice chair, and I would like to nominate her to be our chair. Which would be wonderful.
Great. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none. Do I have a second on that? Lisa, thank you. Discussion? All right, I'm going to take a roll call. Or can I do all?
I think you can probably
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? All right.
Yes.
I'm so excited. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
I know, I've never hit the table yet. Okay, so going back to the reorganization of the school committee, now for vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair? Andrew.
I would actually like to nominate Kelly Welch. I think that based on, you know, all of her hard work in what has been a crazy year. But I think her, the, the information, her knowledge and skills will be invaluable going into the next year. And I'd like to see her continue in some capacity there.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. I just concluded this especially late at this point. I know, right? All those in favor of Kelly Welch as vice chair? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to nominate Kelly Welch as vice chair?
I make a motion to nominate Kelly Welch as vice chair.
Andrea already made the motion. This happens when our meetings go over four hours. Okay, so let's do all in favor of Kelly Welch for vice, vice chair. Any abstentions? Oh, we're, we're, congratulations. This is such a fun night, but it's so late. Any nominations for secretary? Lisa, I would like to nominate Melissa Keith for secretary. Please continue on. I would like to second that. Any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none. All in favor for Melissa Keith, the secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
Yay.
Thank you. Done and done. Okay, so moving on to routine business. Approve the minutes of May 18, 2021. Going back, are there any edits or concerns on this agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve meeting minutes from May 18, 2021?
I'll make it. Oh, no, go ahead, Bill. So a second?
One second.
All in favor of approving the meeting minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Committee member reports?
Anyone? I know it's late. I just have to say publicly that the graduation was monumentally extra special this year. And the God shined down upon it. It was a sunny day. And I really think, I know that the Mary, Mary Gans thing that people put it together, but when you think about all the chairs they had to take off, too, on and off, and the ramp they had to go. So they did a lot of work, but this year, I just think it was extra special, so I'm on that.
It was. And any requests? Oh, Lisa, we have that.
So I just wanted to say that there is going to be a great forum going on tomorrow night. So I just wanted to
So I just wanted to do a shout out for It's Worth the Shot. I, you know, it's, it, it will be interpreted in Portuguese. And I know Kelly has spent a lot of time on getting this together, so I'm looking forward to doing that, I registered. I encourage everyone to attend.
Thanks, thanks for the shout out. Any requests for, oh, Bill?
Yeah, just one, one, just a comment. We had 18 public comments tonight. And I think that was real good. Agree, disagree, like, dislike, whatever. We listen, we're part of the public world, and I think it's good to have those public comments. So those 18 people, thank you.
Any requests for additional information?
Just the redistricting of elementary schools.
Okay, anyone else for requests for information for the next meeting? I would, Lori, can we have an update on the rest of our justice practices, to sort of close out the year? And then, also, as we know, during our next meeting, we're going to discuss subcommittees, and I would like to propose that we, now that COVID is sort of hopefully in the rearview mirror, that we establish an outreach subcommittee, just sort of go back to our intent of being in the schools and hearing from families and hearing from teachers, so something to think about, and we can discuss it at the next meeting. Sounds good. Great. And now I make a motion to move into executive session to discuss strategy in respect to litigation, if an open meeting if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigation, which is school committee and pursuant to GLC 30A, Section 21, 87, to comply with tax under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant, as it may require, specifically the open meeting law. It's anticipated the school committee will not return to public session, it's their second. Yes, Phil Ryder?
Yes.
Phil Dorka?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Oh, yes. Melissa?
Yes.
Andrea? We are.
Yes.
And I'm also, yes, so we will move into executive session and not return, so thank you, everyone. Good night, everybody.
Good night. So is the link for that, because I'm gonna go home and do this. Is the link from that?